Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Marvinsen. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone who is joining us tonight in person on Boston City TV and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's website, under the April 10th meeting link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that's posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. The committee is pleased to offer a live simultaneous interpretation virtually in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Variano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. We will begin with the approval of minutes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March 27, 2024 School Committee meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Chair, and welcome to everyone in person. It's nice to be back. So this morning, I had the pleasure of attending Mayor Wu's FY25 Budget Breakfast at City Hall. Today marked the official transmittal of the city's proposed $4.6 billion operating budget and $4.7 billion five-year capital plan to the Boston City Council. I am grateful to City Council Ways and Means Chair, Councilor Brian Morell, for sharing the city council's budget priorities with our district and you as a committee, as you considered the Boston Public Schools FY25 budget over the past couple of months. Thank you to Councilor Morell for his spirit of collaboration and willingness to work together for the benefit of our city's students and families. I look forward to working with the city council throughout this upcoming city budget process. I also want again to thank Mayor Wu and the city for continuing to make historic investments so we can change and improve the way we are serving our students. This year, many other districts in our state and nation are facing much tougher budgets because they do not have the same support we do here. Rather than announce any investment or increase, many districts are facing only incredibly large reductions. Thanks to the administration's investment, the BPS budget includes an overall $81 million investment. Twenty million of those dollars will go to support high-quality teaching and learning through school-based investments in inclusive education, including additional support for students with special needs and English language learners, and an additional $1.3 billion from our capital budget to help us build and renovate world-class Boston Public Schools facilities. I'd like to provide a quick update on the admissions process for the city's three exam schools: the John D. O'Brien School of Mathematics and Science, Boston Latin Academy, and Boston Latin School. Late this afternoon, the invitations for school year '24-'25 were sent out to students and their families. I want to acknowledge the hard work of the Welcome Services team and Senior Director Sonia Gomez Banre in getting the invitations out almost a month earlier than originally expected. This earlier date was something that parents and our committee here have been asking for, and I'm proud of the team and its work that made it happen. We will share more information about this year's invitations and applicant pool in an upcoming meeting. I also wanted to let you know that the BPS SY24-'25 calendar will soon be available to BPS students and families. The new calendar looks a little different. The SY24-'25 calendar includes important visual updates that are part of a broader initiative to ensure that BPS materials developed by communications are compliant with ADA accessible regulations. These changes ensure that online and assistive technology is able to correctly interpret the meaning of the information contained within the calendar. Shortly after, the calendar will be posted on our homepage at bostonpublicschools.org. And although there are still a few months left of this school year, it's not too early to start thinking and planning for the next school year. Also today, former New England Patriots tight end Rob Gronkowski and members of the Gronkowski family joined Mayor Wu, New Mission Head of School Will Thomas, and BPS student athletes from New Mission for the ribbon cutting of the state-of-the-art weight room at New Mission High School. Fresh off three state championships for Boston Public Schools Athletics, including New Mission Boys Basketball Team, this event celebrated our community's commitment to the success of BPS students and student athletes. We're grateful to the Gronkowski family for their support and generosity, and I heard it was a pretty amazing event. I heard Gronkowski was spiking the ball and everything, so it sounds like the kids had a blast. In speaking of champions, BPS state championship high school teams were recognized with a parade and ceremony with Mayor Wu and their coaches and families at City Hall Plaza on Saturday, April 6. Included were two boys' basketball teams, the Charleston Townies and the New Mission Titans, the Cathedral Panthers Girls Basketball Team, the Josiah Quincy Upper School Wrestlers, and the Boston Latin School Wolfpack Hockey Team. Boston City Council also hosted the BPS teams today at its weekly meeting and treated students to a pizza lunch. We will find our own way to celebrate here in school committee with these championship teams, but we also want to thank the city, Mayor Wu, and our counselors for celebrating our student athletes. A special thank you to Councilor Flynn for including the Josiah Quincy Upper MIAA Division II Wrestling Champions in today's recognition. We are so proud of sophomore Jalen Edmonds and junior Essence Tucker, who both won first place in their respective weight classes. Congratulations again to all of the inspiring athletes and just what a memorable season that they provided to us here in BPS. As a continuation of my Fall 2023 Engagement Tour, I met with a group of more than 30 Vietnamese community leaders last week for a conversation coordinated by the Office of Family and Community Advancement. Thanks to Dr. Anna Tavarez, Deputy Superintendent of Equity, Family, and Community Advancement, Mary Martiz, Chief of Community Engagement, and Joel Gomery, Chief of Multilingual and Multicultural Education, or we call it OMME, and their teams for joining me. It was a great conversation, much of which centered around interest in the Vietnamese dual-language program at the Mather Elementary School and our district's commitment to furthering dual-language. Last week, I joined Mayor Wu for the annual Red Sox Hat Giveaway. This year's event was held at the Yamana Academy in East Boston. The event marked the donation of blue and yellow City Connect Red Sox hats to more than 40,000 Boston Public Schools students and staff at 104 of our schools. This year's hat style celebrates the 20th anniversary of the club's 2004 World Championship. At the event, we were joined by the 2007 World Series Champion Manny Del Carmen, who is also a 2000 graduate of West Roxbury High School, Red Sox President and CEO Sam Kennedy, Red Sox Partner and Foundation Board Member Linda Henry, and School Leader Nia Fensillan. It was a wonderful day. The students were so excited, especially, I think, and most especially, for Wally and Tessie, so they had to get their pictures taken. I just want to thank the entire Red Sox organization for a really enjoyable event and for just their ongoing support with our students. Many BPS students took advantage of a rare astronomical opportunity and learning experience this week by observing the solar eclipse with their school communities. And I bet there's a few people in the room who also observed that. Students from the Elliott K8 Innovation School joined their families, excuse me, to watch the event, while students at the Kenny K6 Elementary School were joined by representatives of LEGO, who helped explain what was happening and provided fun activities. I was lucky enough to see the eclipse from the roof of this building along with many of my colleagues, and it was just the amount of wonder and joy that everybody took in watching it through safety glasses. It was just really a memorable event that I think will join all of us. And Chair, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, I just want to thank the Superintendent for her report. Oh, sorry.
No, thank you for the report, just so that we're staying on top of things. How are we doing just with summer programming? And really thinking about how are recent families there?
Sure, through you, Chair. So actually, in the next meeting, Dr. Alkins will be providing the full update with summer programming, but I will say it's going wonderfully. The summer team is working closely, as is special education, ESY programming. Everything is actually earlier and out earlier, which was another goal of ours, and so we'll share all the numbers with you next week.
Sure.
Let's throw a new.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent, it was nice to spend time with you at that Red Sox event and also the other school you visited in East Boston that day because there's been a lot going on to our East Boston communities recently, from safety issues to some pretty serious tragic news. So it was nice, the support that the district has been providing to those schools, and appreciate you personally. You and I both visited one of the schools in particular. So I'm interested in, you mentioned the exam school admissions went out today, and thank you for that. Love that it's much earlier than it was before, so allows families to make some choices. I will be interested, and I know the data isn't ready yet, but it'll be interesting to see the difference this year based upon the tweak that we had made to the policy and what the impact has been on students that are in schools that have points versus don't have points by tier. So do we just have a sense when that data will be out? Or I know it's not the priority right now. That's the secondary piece following up, right?
Yes, through you, Chair. So the team is busy beginning analyzing it. I can't commit yet to which school committee meeting we will update, but it will be one of the next couple. You know, I do think that us getting the data earlier for many reasons, it just helps us to be able, as we think going forward, to any kind of additional change. We get the data earlier. We have longer to look at it. So I'm very pleased and proud of the team. It was an enormous amount of work to get it earlier, including getting the grades from all the different entities. So it's just a lot of work. And then the process of checking and rechecking and triple-checking so that we make sure our calculations are correct and the invitations are correct. So we'll look forward to providing all of that data over the next few school committees.
So if you could just dig a speck deep on that, how did, how were you able to shave so much time on it? Is it, are all the schools now getting used to getting the grades in? You've worked out the process about trimesters versus dual semesters, that type of thing? Is it getting more regular information from BPS schools, from the charter schools? How did they shave so much time off?
Well, I mean, I think it is, it's a product, I think, of certainly schools becoming more familiar with it, but also our school superintendents and the regional soup's being engaged to work with our school leaders to make sure that data comes over. It's also working, you know, we have to also work with the outside schools such as our charters, our private and parochial schools. And so it's really just giving everyone the same sense of urgency that things need to be provided as soon as possible. And I think that's also parents getting information in. So I think in general, everybody did what they needed to do with the new timelines. And as a result, we were able to, you know, give the information. So parents, I think, you know, private school acceptances and many of them are due this coming Friday, and that was really something that the parent community had asked us to please make sure we were getting the information to them so that they can make a good decision.
Very much so, and it's great that you beat that time because you had committed to trying to reach it. So love that you're able to, and we're comfortable with this data that, you know, it has been vetted.
Very much, very much. Yes, it's been vetted and re-vetted, yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the team who worked on this.
Mr. Brown?
First of all, thank you for the report. And I know this request may be out of what? But the students who were borderline or who were somehow declined, rejected to these exam schools in the first round or the second round, is there any way that we can have, you know, follow-up information on them? Just to see where they are and how they're dealing with the fact that they are now not at the school that they, you know, they would like to be, despite the fact that, you know, otherwise they would be, that they would be admitted, but because of the change?
So I think definitely, so I think definitely we will, I think that was the timer. I think, I think definitely, Member Tron, we can, we can certainly, from the change that we made on the policy, look at the particular tiers that we believe would have been impacted so we can look deeply at them. We can look at the points versus the non-points. I think in terms of actually looking at what number of students did not get an invitation to any of the exam schools and then where they go, if they go to a BPS school, we can track that longitudinally. I think it would be difficult would be if they were to exit the system.
Right.
Just a short follow-up. The reason I'm asking this because we, you know, for the past few years since the implementation of the policy, we've had so many parents, groups, students that come before us, that came before us, testifying to the fact that they are otherwise qualified for these schools, but they were not selected because of the new policy that we implemented. I was just wondering how they are doing now. And, you know, would there be some kind of support that we somehow can allay, alleviate their, you know, the fact that they were, they were rejected despite their potential for admission from the beginning? So that, you know, I was more interested in looking for something that would assist them, that would somehow alleviate their concerns or their, you know, loss of hope or whatever.
Yeah, so I can, I can talk with the team. It's more likely a summer project. But we could, we can look, we could look historically at the last two years for students who did not get an invitation and what portion of them stayed in BPS and where they ended up. The data outside of the system is just much harder to garner, but I think for inside the system, we can certainly do that.
That would be great.
Okay. Yeah. I have a follow-up question to that in terms of just no understanding the number of students we have that qualify for seats versus the number of seats that we actually have. And is that difference great enough that we need to consider an additional school, expanding the programs? Because my concern, similar to Mr. Tron's, is that we may be losing students that we would otherwise like to keep in the district by virtue of not being able to provide them with a product, a seat in a school that they feel will give them what they need next. Because I don't feel that in a time when we are losing students that we want to lose any of them. So how do we begin to hear and think about ways of accommodating students or in growing stronger programs, period, for all of our students, but particularly students who are in this case?
Right, so through you, Chair. So I think we can, we can definitely do a little bit of a study on who's remained. I think part of the alignment to the seventh grade for the high schools, it was to give parents who did not, whose kids did not get a seat in the seventh grade, the opportunity to have access to high schools at an earlier grade. And I think this is really the work, the deep work we're doing at the secondary level, which is to create that option for high-quality student seats. And that really is about early college. That really is about our careers and how we're expanding those pretty exponentially, you know, in the course of a short amount of time so that parents do in fact have more choice if they, you know, if a student sat for the exam school and they didn't get in. I think on the ninth grade, same thing. We can look at the ninth grade data to see, has the ninth grade data changed? Do we see more BPS kids applying in the ninth grade versus students from the outside, parochial or charter? We can also look at that as well. So I think we'll get a lot of yield from this amount of data that we're about to look at.
Two follow-up questions. One, thank you for the report. Do we have the total number of students who were invited? Or is that just you're naming it as a later presentation?
I think we can give some of the early on data around it at the next one. And then I think for some of the deeper data, which might be the analysis across the particular points, non-points, that might take us an extra couple of weeks to be able to do. But I'll have to confer with the team to see how long they believe that that will take.
Copy. And then I think sort of second question, because I am always worried about our heavy focus on these three schools. The notifications for all of our other schools has also gone out. So I'm curious, sort of in the presentation around exam schools, can we also get data, I think two things we've been talking about, sort of where are parents and students voting with their feet? So like, what are our highest-demand schools? What are our lowest-demand schools? And then what schools are we seeing where we're going to have to administratively place the most students? And I think that's from ascending school as well as the impact on a receiving school. I think that conversation, this conversation, obviously important because we know that these three schools are important to the community. But I think this conversation is also really important as we think about the future of our system and the nature of a choice system, obviously, is that people have choice.
Yeah, so I think we can give some of that preliminary data from the first round, certainly. What we also find is with administrative assignment that happens in the later rounds, so that piece of data in particular won't show up as much.
Yeah. But it will still be interesting, like, parent, even if my school was not actively involved in my student applying, I'm gonna, my kid is gonna be applying in the first round. But I also was a kid in a different moment of my life where, like, I didn't have that experience. And so without the heavy hand of a school, I would have had to apply in round two or have been administratively placed, right? So I can see sort of both realities. So there's like a there, there. You don't get your top choice if you don't get in the first round. So that, that first round datum, I think, is, will be interesting for us to sort of think about on a school experience, sort of what's going right and also what's going wrong? Like, what schools had 100% of their kids applying first round and what schools didn't?
Right.
There's like a there, there for us to really talk about.
Yeah, no, it'd definitely be informative data. I also think some of the horse mans will come later because their lotteries are later. So the high schools are sort of staggered in a way. But we'll piece together what we can for the next one just as a way to be sort of saying, here's some of the trends we're seeing. Understanding that data may look different after the third round.
Okay, thank you all. I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the superintendent's report is approved. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Parva?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. The meeting will feature two public comment periods, with the first comment period limited to one hour. Priority will be given to those testifying in person. Time permitting, the committee will then open it up for virtual testimony. After one hour, anyone who hasn't testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have 13 speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and I would remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than three minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. We will begin this evening with our in-person speakers. Our first speaker is Gigi Green, followed by Giovanni Burgos and Kevin Suniga.
I'm Gigi Green, a senior at Snowden International High School. First, I'd like to apologize for not having a full comment prepared as I'm currently finishing my international baccalaureate studies. I have the added pressure of needing that diploma to attend the University of Galway in Ireland as I will not receive a BPS diploma due to my boycott of the MCAS. I was at the MCAS ballot question hearing a few weeks ago, and I'm here today because I am disturbed by what I saw there. A panel of representatives that did not resemble my BPS community in any way offered one-sided criticism of the reform. One of the so-called experts compared students to cattle, and there are no other experts aside from MCAS. It felt very different from my previous experience several months ago when I testified in front of the Education Committee in support of the Thrive Act. I shared with them why I am boycotting the MCAS. When I entered ninth grade, I took a physics class in which I did not learn physics. We learned instead to take the physics MCAS test. I also learned about the fear, intimidation around, and lack of belief in MCAS, especially at the high school level, where people will speak against it privately but not publicly. I decided to take a stand, which I have done for the past three years because I believe that MCAS is not an assessment of my competency nor of any other student in this state. I shared with the committee that I would be valedictorian if not for this test. My mom says that what you risk reveals what you value. And I will not lie, not being able to receive that honor is a sacrifice which I have willingly made. Yet on top of that, I have been informed that I cannot participate in graduation in any capacity, not even as an attendee. My absence will be noted by my peers, given my leadership in the school community, and I am on the student government. I believe that my right to address, I think I deserve the right to address my class at graduation. In the words of the late, great John Lewis, "We're all going to be called to make some good trouble in the times ahead." As we go out into the world, I want to remind my classmates of their power and that they have agency if only they use it. I know what the governor's position on MCAS is. I wonder what BPS's stance will be, seeing as MCAS has a bigger impact in Boston than in some other communities. I hope that my protest will be as impactful in the adults as the students I have spoken to. We have amazing teachers in this city and state, and it's a damn shame to waste them teaching us to take tests. Ms. Skipper, I look forward to continuing this conversation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Giovanni Burgos, who would be supported by our Spanish interpreter.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Giovanni Burgos. I am a bus monitor. I haven't been a bus monitor forever, like 19 years. I am a, my niece, Wan Owan, monitor, and also I am running for vice president for the Monitor Union. I'm, asked for a translation because I am a little nervous. This is my first time here, and I want to make clear the, what am I gonna say tonight? Yo estoy aquí porque yo me comuniqué con el director de transportación.
The reason I'm here tonight is because I communicated with the director of transportation.
Por unos, um, Bobby Hayes, no sé cómo se dice eso, que están pasando en los moneda department.
Because there are a couple of things that are taking place at the monitor, bus monitor department.
Yo tuve un meeting con él, le expresé que hay un, un conflicto de intereses entre un supervisor y su familia que trabajan ahí.
I did talk to the director. I did express that there is a conflict of interest between a supervisor and some family relatives that do work there as well.
Que el, el supervisor hace el payroll de su propia familia, y eso no se puede.
So what is happening is that the supervisor is doing the, the family's payroll, and that should not be allowed to, should not happen.
Sobin, eh, las monitoras vinieron, me trayeron eso a mi atención. Me dijeron que como yo estoy corriendo para vicepresidenta, que, que yo voy a hacer con el fe de Tison, que está pasando.
So monitors brought this to my attention, considering the fact that I am applying. Actually, I'm a candidate for, for this position to see how are we going to handle this?
Y yo lo, lo, se lo dije al, al director, y él lo, él lo único que hizo, brush it off, como él siempre hace.
So I did communicate this to the director, and he just brushed it up as he always does. And my interest is applying for the position of vice president.
Después de ese meeting, yo fui a la Freeport Yard, y me encontré con que las monitoras, están, le hicieron un tent afuera, y ese tent no tenía heater.
You know?
Es un, cómo se dice un tent, una carpa.
I went to Freeport Yard, and I did find that they had a, a tent there.
Con no heat.
There was a tent there with no heat.
Since last year. Y yo les reporté eso al director, al, a la, primero llamé a la mayor, um, la mayor, mayor's office, y lo reporté porque no tienen como animales en una jaula.
So I did call the mayor's office. I did report this situation because basically we are like animals in a cage.
Después de que yo, tres días después de ese meeting, yo fui a la yarda porque estoy haciendo la campaña para que explicarle que yo voy a hacer, voy a tratar.
30 seconds.
So it's three, it's three days after I went to the yard because I'm in the process of doing the campaign, as I explained before, that I'm interested in the candidacy for one position.
Y los supervisores vi que estaban retaliating conmigo.
So I was able to perceive that the supervisors were retaliating against me.
Yo siempre es abogado por lo, por los derechos de la monitora, y he salvado a muchas monitoras para que no pierdan su trabajo.
I'm always advocating for the monitors' right, and I had saved many of them from not losing their jobs.
En las dos administraciones, la pasada y esta, y nunca nadie me has, me ha hecho una carta.
So this happened during the previous administration and the current, the present one. I have never received a letter of any type from none of them.
So yo llamé a mi, a mi abogado, y le dije que me llamaron para un, para la oficina.
Miss Burgos, your time is up.
So I did call my lawyer, and I told them that I was called to go to one of the offices.
Without no union representation, without, tell me what it is. And this is discrimination. They told me that they cannot write me up like that. And this is the retaliation against because I complained, and they need to take that letter back.
Next speaker is Kevin Suniga.
Uh, school committee members and superintendent. My name is Kevin Suniga, and I'm a bilingual school psychologist at the Mario Man Academy in East Boston. This is my sixth year serving 700 K through H students, over 90%, of whom speak a second language. In my role, I have witnessed firsthand the unique challenges and diverse needs of our multicultural and multilingual learners. I am here tonight to share information about school psychologists' critical role and express my deep concerns regarding the district's plan to cut positions from the Behavioral Health Services Department. As school psychologists, we follow the national best practice model and bring a unique and comprehensive skill set to the table. Our responsibilities extend well beyond the special education process. We provide crucial expertise in designing and providing multi-tier support to address academic, behavioral, and social emotional concerns. We collaborate with teachers, interventionists, administrations, families, and social workers to create a supportive environment for our students. As a bilingual person of color and a former BPS student, my lived experience is intimately connected to the students I serve. I have witnessed the concerning trend where systems in place are actively working against progress for the students who need it the most. The superintendent and the mayor recently announced a substantial investment of over $20 million in mental health, but that funding is being directed to the Boston Public Health Commission and not our schools. In spite of this significant investment, school psychologists' positions are still being cut from our department. This would affect our student-to-psychology ratio and limit our ability to provide comprehensive services to students across the district. As a district, we should strive to increase mental health in bilingual school psychologists because our students and families deserve it. Providing equitable services to our multilingual learners should be a priority and not be an afterthought. I urge you to seek full transparency from the BPS leaders, and please consider altercations to budgetary allocations to ensure no school psychologists are at risk of losing their position. It is essential that this funding is directed towards preserving school psychologists' positions that provide direct services to our students. As we navigate transition to inclusion, I ask you to consider that invaluable role of school psychologists in creating an inclusive and supportive environment for all learners. Our students and their families deserve comprehensive and culturally responsive support that truly addresses their needs. School psychologies are uniquely trained and ready, ready to help, but we need your support. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. We will now transition to virtual testimonies. Please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comment, and be prepared to unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Please raise your virtual hand when I call your name. First group of speakers is John Mudd, Lisa Graf, Mike Heisman, and Nisa Harrison. Please raise your hands. John Mudd?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, my name is John Mudd. I'm a resident of Cambridge and a longtime education advocate in Boston. This is April 10th. The Long-Term Facilities Plan on page 47 says that in, in the late March-April period, the district will share proposals with a quote "time-bound advisory working group" and with the school committee. This timeline raises many questions. Will the district be making specific facilities proposals for mergers, closings, and new investments this April or this spring for implementation next school year? Who or what is this quote "time-bound advisory working group"? And most important, when and how will the affected communities and families be engaged in the proposals? What opportunity will they have to participate in these proposals before they come to the school committee or the mayor? The timeline outlined on page 47 has no provision for the engagement of the community in the development of specific proposals. The only commitment is to clearly communicating why the decision was made. Timeline for new capital planning proposals outlined in later pages does say there will be, quote, "meetings with each impacted community." But this set just as the goal of a clear and transparent communication about the proposal, the supporting data, and initial outline of a transition plan. The whole BPS orientation seems to be for the district to tell parents and communities what the district has decided to do to them. It is not designed to engage the community in any authentic way in the development of the proposals. This approach has, this approach has repeatedly failed in the past. It has led to protest, not participation. It has increased cynicism and mistrust. Why would we continue this failed process? Why can't we learn from the past? Why can't we do it right this time? School committee members, please ask the superintendent. One, will there be proposals for mergers, closings, or new investments this year? Two, what and who is this time-limited advisory working group? And three, how will the district and city planners genuinely engage the participation of parents and communities in the development of the facility proposals that will affect them? And, and when the proposals are in draft form before they are presented to the school? This kind of parent and community participation does not require more staff. It requires a change in the mindset of the district about how to engage the community. There must be a commitment to treating parents as partners, not telling them what the district has decided is best for them. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Lisa Graf.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please turn on your camera.
Okay. Hi, um, my name is Lisa Jane Graf, and I am a BPS parent and a self-identified autistic person. This month is Autism Acceptance Month. Each year, there is movement forward on autistic people being accepted for who they are, being listened to when sharing their lived experiences, and having their voices incorporated into policies that are reflective of their values. However, this movement is slow, and there can be pushback. This month, I'm also in my last semester at Suffolk University for a master's in public administration. As part of this work, I'm overseeing a project that has been funded by a Suffolk University MEEP grant. This project can be viewed at insteadofaba.org and is informed by a growing number of neurodivergent organizations and experts. The focus of this project is to educate caregivers who have been recommended applied behavioral analysis for their child, information about the alternative of opting out of ABA and choosing neurodiversity-affirming supports only. Also, as part of this work, the risks of ABA are shared to ensure that caregivers have their legal right to informed consent when making decisions about their child's supports and accommodation. Currently, IEP and 504 templates are being developed that will not include ABA and only include neurodiversity-affirming supports. They will be built off of the new state IEP forms. I ask BPS staff and caregivers to contribute to this important work. Thank you for your time and possible collaboration. Happy Autism Acceptance Month, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mike Heisman.
Mike Heisman, Beja Dorchester. The BPS strategic vision begins with, at BPS, every child in every classroom is entitled to an equitable, world-class, high-quality education. At your last school committee meeting, five of you voted in support of a budget that betrays this wonderful aspirational vision. Five of you put your names on a document that promises additional harm to our children. Since my daughter entered the BPS in the mid-'90s, I have been an educational justice, justice activist for the BPS. For the last two budgets, Stephen Alkins and Brandon Cadet Hernandez voted on opposition. In my memory, this is unprecedented, and I appreciate their no votes. Both of these gentle people were painfully conflicted. When Dr. Alkins hesitantly voted no, his voice was so soft and quiet, he was asked to repeat his vote. When Mr. Cadet Hernandez voted no, he apologetically asked that he still be considered to be a member of the team. What is this team, and what is their mission? Throughout the history of Boston, going back almost 400 years, most of our children have attended under-resourced schools. Too often, conditions have been deplorable. This has always been done with the consent of a team, supporting the will of the power structure. The last couple of months, I've wished that hundreds of the school administrators and central office workers, thousands of teachers, tens of thousands of students and their parents and caregivers, and then tens of thousands of community members had raised hell against this abusive budget. This has been part of my aspirational vision. Why did Mayor Wu block the will of the people and unilaterally prevent an elected school committee? The tepid opposition to this abusive budget is exactly what Boss Wu wanted. This is the team that Mr. Cadet Hernandez and all of you belong. This is the team that begins your every meeting by standing and pledging your allegiance. This proposed budget serves poorly our children and community. However, your process protected the mayor and supports a system that does not love all of our children. This story shows is that we need an elected school committee and arouse public that believes that it is how, has the power to protect, educate, and love all of our children. I also want to speak in support of that student who spoke first at this meeting. She's an example of what an educated BPS student looks like. She is courageous, she should not be punished. She is an exemplary model of what we want our students to be.
Thank you. Nisa Harrison is not signing to the meeting. So the next group is Mike Sweeney, Cynthia Marinelli, Cheryl Buckman, Deidra Manning, Joseph Smith, and Edith Brazil. Mike Sweeney?
Hello, everyone, district commissioners committee. My name is Mike Sweeney, and I just moved to Madoff Hand from Dorchester. This is my second year working as a school psychologist at the English High School in JP. Before BPS, I worked as an autism spectrum disorder interventionist and a mental health counselor in San Francisco and Oakland Public Schools, respectively. I became the school psychologist because I wanted to emulate the psychologist who helped my brother and I. My brother receives special education, education support in school due to his developmental delay. The psychologist thoroughly evaluated my brother's cognitive, behavioral, social, and academic strengths and weaknesses, consulted frequently with my parents, taught my brother emotional regulation and social skills, and effectively supported him through school. My brother recently graduated from college and is now in an MBA program at a competitive university. This school psychologist also supported me as I struggled with, grappled with my identity as a closeted adolescent. This psychologist is also identified as LGBTQ. The psychologist The psychologist was a great raw model for me as a successful LGBTQ person who felt secure in their identity. With this psychologist's support, I graduated high school, thank college, and received an education specialist degree. Today, I'm here to represent my fellow BPS psychologists and other LGBTQ students. School psychologists support students and families academically, behaviorally, and emotionally. Yet, the current plan for the next year cuts school psychologist positions in BPS. This spring, I heard the school committee cheer investment in mental health in school. However, I'm deeply concerned that the impacts of cuts will prevent students from having the best support that they are entitled to, especially following the regression seen following the COVID-19 pandemic. School psychologists are trained to complete the following: consultation and collaboration with teachers, students, and staff; academic interventions; mental health services and interventions; school-wide practices; promoting safe and supportive schools; family and community collaboration; equitable practices for diverse students; research and evidence-based practices; legal, ethic, and professional practices. Essentially, you name it, BPS psychs can do it. We are Boston's one-stop shop for all social, emotional, behavioral, and academic needs. I urge the school committee to question Superintendent Skipper and Mayor Wu about the proposed cuts to the school psychologist positions in the tier current number of psychologists. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker is Cynthia Marinelli.
Hi there. My name is Cynthia Marinelli. This is my twelfth year as a school psychologist and fourth year working as a psychologist in Boston Public Schools. I became a school psychologist because I believe in empowerment, positive psychology, and intervention supports. I'd also like to be inspirational to youth to overcome any adversity. I myself am bilingual Latina doctoral-level staff in Boston, and I currently work at a dual-language English-Spanish school at the Hurley and South End. My position is being reduced from five days to three days. And district-wide, there are cuts to school psychologists in Boston. So I'm here to urge the school committee to question Superintendent Skipper, Mayor Wu, about the proposed cuts to school psychologist positions. While I can't speak for everyone, I can't speak on my personal experiences. This school year and last, I provided nine individual counseling, five group counseling that consisted of fifteen students through our SST. And so about twenty-five to thirty students each year are supported by me at the full five days. Knowing that our school has about three hundred students in the building, that means I'm supporting about ten percent of the students in the highest social-emotional needs in the top-tier-two-and-three level with intensive counseling services. These counseling services do not include regular walk-ins that come into our shared mental health office where myself and our social worker work with students in lunch groups or mental health breaks or emotional check-ins for those that have temporary needs or bullying investigations, crisis support, support to those with behavioral support plans. Our walk-ins last year logged at approximately two hundred thirty-seven students for the school year. That means we would see about students two times per day who were not in my regular counseling schedule for an additional universal support to the entire school. So I imagine that number would continue to increase as students seek mental health support as a priority so that they may be the most successful social-emotional version of themselves in the academic realm. I also consult with parents and teachers about students' strengths and needs from testing, counseling, behavioral support plans, or SST projects. I do consults for two hours weekly around incentives and reward programs, advisory periods where I push into classrooms. I also push in for social-emotional learning. So on top of doing all this, I test fifty-five students just in one school. However, I also travel district-wide to other schools for bilingual evaluations because we do not have enough positions to fill that need of our students that are struggling with either communication or learning needs and speak another language.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cheryl Buckman. Ms. Cheryl Buckman, please accept the prompt. We could... We will continue with Deidra Manning. We can go back, come back to you. Deidra Manning?
Hello, my name is Deidra Manning. I'm a single parent, a Dorchester resident, and parent of a BPS fourth grader and a former BPS student who now goes to a charter school. In response to Vice Chair O'Neill's question of how did BPS shave so much time off the exam school notification process? It's because it's run as a kangaroo court. They refuse to engage with people. They left Boston collegiate administrators hanging when they were questioning how the GPA calculation was done for their students who use standards-based grading. It's a very difficult grade to receive, as Vice Chair O'Neill knows from being quoted in a WBUR article. For the first quarter of over two hundred students combined for fifth and sixth grade, only one student, a fifth grader, got all fours to earn first honors. My daughter got three threes and five fours. And that should have resulted in a GPA of ten point nine three seven or something like that. I communicated directly with the Office of Data Accountability, and they confirmed that that's what it should be. But a month later, they sent me notification that her GPA was a ten point three one two five. That dropped her overall composite score by four points and meant that she really had no choice in this exam school process. BPS fails students in so many ways. There are not enough quality elementary school students to prepare children for exam schools. BPS does not enforce the BPS Code of Conduct, which is why my older daughter left BPS after Mrs. Lampron was assaulted by a sixteen-year-old girl and BPS kept administratively assigning problem kids, and there's so much violence. We only lasted seven months. I only removed my younger daughter there at the beginning of this school year. We stayed an extra two years, hoping that they would fix the Henderson, and they just wouldn't. My daughter didn't get any bonus points. She was assigned to a neighborhood tier that we're not living in. She had to take the MAP growth assessment under very different and stressful testing conditions that BPS students aren't tested under. And her school used a more difficult grading system that BPS recognizes puts kids at disadvantage, but they only use a special process for their own students when converting the GPA. I just don't understand how they can treat a different set of children so differently. Boston Public Schools and all public schools are supposed to open doors to opportunity, not close them. I feel strongly that BPS is exacting retribution on students who leave the system. BPS should make the system so good that people want to stay. I just am... I honestly don't even know what to do at this point. I'm going to continue to fight because I have a fourth grader who I don't want to see kicked to the curb like my older daughter was. It's just unconscionable that you're acting this way. Actions should have consequences. And students who are high achieving and who work hard should have opportunities. The tier system should...
Next speaker is Cheryl Buckman.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a parent to a BPS special needs student who is a fifth grader at the Dever in Dorchester. And I'm a member of FAMCOSA, a long-life resident of South Boston. I'm here to ask you not to play this dangerous game with a high-quality education. As you know, my son attends the Dever, which wanted to receive a ship in two thousand fourteen, in which the community rallied for it not to do. The state didn't listen to those parents, teachers, and staffers. The Dever lost fifteen percent of its Latin teachers in a state-of-the-art dual-language program. Now with these budget cuts, the Dever is expected to lose ten percent of its full-time teachers, staffers, and high-quality programs. Haven't our children already suffered enough? In this process, why are we playing tug-of-war? Shouldn't we be investing in our children's future by adding more programs, more teachers? Our children are our tomorrow's future and beyond. Without the proper materials, teachers, or places to learn, how do they spread their wings and thrive? Cutting the budget is a major insult and blow to our teachers and staffers who have been the superheroes for our children during and after the pandemic. This is how we repay them: by telling them they could lose their jobs. This is how we repay our children: by telling them they have these programs that they'll possibly lose. Where did we go wrong here? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Joseph Smith.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So, thank you, everyone, for allowing me to speak in front of this panel this evening. My name is Joseph Smith, and I am a second-year school psychologist currently working at the John D. Philbrick School in Rosendale. I want to thank you all for giving me this opportunity to help represent the Boston School of Psychologists and share some of the growing concerns, some of which have already been shared here tonight. Unfortunately, despite the significant role we are capable of filling in the functioning and growth of Boston's mental health and special education programs, we are currently left fighting to maintain the few positions we now have as contract negotiations continue to unfold. Due to many school psychologists' overwhelming caseloads, many people simply view us as test administrators who occasionally support in counseling services. This is a gross underestimate of what we are capable of providing in our school communities. Now, I will refrain from restating the long list of qualifications we hold as they were just previously shared by my colleague Mike. But I do want to emphasize that if we had the proper manpower and resources, we could not only play a bigger role in supporting our students' mental health, but in just about any area of school functioning. And yet, because we are the only roles in the school district who are capable of completing specific kinds of testing for several of the DESI disability categories for special education qualification, this is all we seem to be valued for at the district level. Despite the ridiculous amount of testing the majority of school psychs are expected to complete during the year, many school psychologists still find the time to fulfill many other responsibilities, many of which overlap with many of our colleagues and other roles, and yet get no acknowledgement or support from the district level. This is particularly jarring as Boston shifts towards a full-inclusion model. There's never been a better time to increase the number of school psychologists in the district because we are trained in this specific kind of work. We can support in so many different ways. I'm here just to ask, how do we get it so that those determining this budget see the value of having one of us school psychologists in every school, like our nurses and social workers? How do we get our school leaders to realize that if they want us to be more involved in our schools, we need to set boundaries on the number of assessments assigned to us as well as the counseling cases we take on? We're not asking for major changes all at once, but the fact that we are at risk of losing positions when we are already overworked, as is, is absolutely ridiculous. It has been reported to me that the union representatives can't even get a response from the superintendent's office. We are showing up every day to improve the experience of our...
Our next speaker, our last speaker is Edith Brazil.
Thank you so much. What has BPS done with the $430 million in ESAR funds? How is the additional $50 million allotted by the mayor for inclusion being used? How is the $1.6 billion general fund an $81 million increase used to improve student outcomes? Title I funds in 2024 were raised to $43 million, but only $15 million will go directly to schools. This is a sixty-three percent overhead charge. That's sixty-three cents on a dollar. What is that being used for, and why aren't these funds going directly to schools? Overall, gaps persist for Black students due to poor access to literacy interventions, harsh discipline, lack of access to evidence-based inclusion models, ineffective special ed services, limited AP, and exam school enrollment, all while Black families flee BPS at the highest rates because their school choice is limited to chronically underperforming, underfunded, under-resourced, understaffed, and undersupported schools. Fifty-year anniversary of Judge Garrity's desegregation order and racial equity remains a broken promise for Black students. This administration has weaponized the HR process to silence and erase Black leaders during racial equity work, and Black teachers are collateral damage of budget cuts. So where are we? The racial equity planning tool abandoned. Plan to hire nine equity specialists scrapped. Racial Equity Planning Impact Committee disbanded. Racial Equity Impact Dashboard dismantled. Racial Equity Complaints ignored. Racial Justice Work eliminated. Anti-racist Advisory Committee has been hacked into learning conversations. Meanwhile, the school committee is proposing a bifurcated plan to transition the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Task Force into a watered-down advisory committee to the superintendent. To be clear, the erasure of this racial equity work has been done intentionally during this administration, beginning with the secret driving out of Dr. Charles Grandson, who led all of this work. Racial equity work has been replaced by the familiar tokenism of the past that places Black students outside the margins of racial equity. Wiping out racial equity work is taxation without representation. Chair Robinson, this is on your watch. This year, you stated you have the superintendent's back. What about our children, families, and educators? We demand fiscal accountability, a comprehensive budget audit of the district's budget with a through line for racial equity, and that's something that the school committee should vote and could vote on right now.
That concludes public testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Parvex. Thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. Moving on now to action items. Our first action item this evening is the Grants for Approval totaling $145,375. Now, I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Thank you, Chair. So I think on these two grants, they're pretty self-explanatory. One is around our homeless services, and this has to do with students that are coming in. There's been a series of updates to the grant, modifications to the grant. This is the latest. And we also have, I believe, Ryan Marx is here to provide any commentary if that were needed. So I would just encourage us to vote for these. I think both of these support the ongoing work of the district. And the second one is just a small health grant. It's just, again, a continuation grant.
Thank you. And now open it up to questions and comments from the committee.
I have one. Not necessarily related to the grant, but just how we are tracking the numbers of our homeless student population. And are we... are we seeing particular trends in that population?
Sure. So, uh, Brian, Brian, do you wanna answer that one?
Hi, everyone. Uh, I'm Brian Marx, Senior Director of Optune Youth. Uh, so if I understood your question correctly, you're asking about how we're tracking the uh number of students experiencing homelessness uh as well as if there are any increases. So unfortunately, we're seeing very significant increases. Um, we will have the highest number of students experiencing homelessness uh for a given school year that we've ever identified, to my knowledge. I believe that the highest number we've ever had was in school year seventeen eighteen, which was just over forty five hundred students experiencing homelessness, and we are likely to surpass five thousand students this year. It's also important to keep in mind the context that through our partnership with Boston Housing Authority, we've housed uh over a thousand families um in the past four years, actually over fifteen hundred families. So you can imagine what that number would look like without some of those housing stability programs that we've been able to implement. So um families are struggling. There's a lot of factors at play, of course, the the very high cost of living in Boston, seeing some of the protections that were in place around COVID. Um, in terms of tracking, we have a very robust system. Uh, we work closely with uh welcome services. We work closely with a network of school-based homeless liaison, so every school has a staff person designated as a school homeless liaison. Uh, we have a uh the ability to maintain confidential records in our student information system. Um, and then, as it relates to newly arriving families, newcomer families that are in some of the emergency shelter sites, we're working closely with uh DESI as whether, as well as other state agencies to ver- to receive and then verify um our identification up against the identification of when they're coming into the shelter system. So actually, um, a a major component of that took place last week where we verified our list and then submitted it to to DESI through the electronic security portal so that they can verify on their end. So uh very robust process in terms of identification, but the need is extreme.
Yeah, I would just add to that, that, you know, we we have strong partnerships with Higher Ground, HERC, there's there's a number of um nonprofit agencies that we work with closely to support. So it's really kind of all hands on deck. One concerning trend is, I think, um, the unaccompanied minors, and that is our older students uh who come in and um are homeless and uh don't have any kind of family fabric to rely on. So we're really trying to uh work to support, and they're really in all of our high schools uh with some concentration. So I think it's um, to Brian's point, this is, it's been a growing issue, but it's also an issue where it there's no one descriptor for what leads to homelessness uh or how to solve it. And so you really have to work across the different populations of students to figure out what that customized solution set is to best support.
So I think, I guess my follow-up question to that would be, what ideas are you currently pursuing for either newer partnerships with other nonprofits and like in the Boston area or just forward more funding essentially?
Yeah, so we have a number of strategies in place. Um, we uh thankfully to to the this uh committee, the school committee, we we will have uh sustainability for our uh essential housing uh s- stability programs going into next year. We've also been involved with uh a a child homeless uh intercept mapping and engagement initiative where we've worked across multiple uh focus areas based on some of the social determinants of uh child and family homelessness from the Aspen Institute. So uh over the course of the last twelve months, we've convened multiple groups, including here at Bowling, to really map out the services and resources, identify where we have gaps, and then also have uh students and families themselves at the table to lend voice to their experiences and where they face barriers in the system. Um, the overall system right now is stretched incredibly thin, so we have to be creative in terms of our 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 case management to try to identify any and all resources that are available. In all honesty, o- oftentimes, the the basic necessities types of resources like coats and backpacks and sneakers, which we have and we're really well resourced and very thankful to that, that's much easier to come by. Um, the types of multi-million dollar initiatives that are required to stably house folks and shift some of the broader policies, I mean, I think that's a conversation that we need to have in all public forums.
Any other question? Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any objection, a discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the grants by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved. Our second action item for tonight is the school name change proposal, Boston Community Leadership Academy, McCormick Adoption of Joint Identity and renaming as the Ruth Batson Academy. Before I open it up to the committee for final questions and comments, I'd like to invite the superintendent to offer final thoughts.
Uh, great. Thank you, Chair. I I think we just had such a powerful presentation from uh, you know, school leader Johnson, the the last meeting uh for the thorough process that they went through and uh the amazing decision they made in choosing to name BCLA McCormick after uh Ruth Batson, who was just such an such a a deep, you know, community member and did so much for our schools, was tireless advocate. Um, this is uh to me, an honor uh for us to be able to put forward, and my hope is that the committee fully supports.
Thank you. And now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Well, I I certainly second superintendent's comments, and if there's nothing further, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's school name change proposal, Boston Community Leadership Academy slash McCormick Adoption of Joint Identity and renaming as the Ruth Batson Academy as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa, Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Trent?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. We'll move right into our main report, Transformation School Update on the third quarter of this school year. I'll now invite Mike Saban, Executive Director of School Transformation, Holmes Elementary School Leader, Leanne Hughes Odom, and Dearborn STEM Academy School Leader Darlene Mar- Marcano to please step forward with the presentation. While they're getting settled, I'd like to invite the superintendent to give opening remarks.
Uh, wonderful, Chair. We're in for a treat when I look at the school leaders that are here. Um, so this is the third quarter update on transformation schools. As you may recall, as part of the requirements for our systemic improvement plan or our SIP, we're providing quarterly updates to the committee. Two of those updates are part of my report, and the other two are formal reports that go more in depth. We provided you with an in-depth report at the October eighteenth meeting and a second report at the February twenty eighth school committee meeting. Tonight, we will share some key details with the final report for SY twenty three, twenty four before the end of the school year. As you know, transformation schools is the term BPS uses to refer to schools identified by DESI as requiring assistance or intervention. They are schools in the bottom ten percent of SLEAK accountability system. Primary support for our transformation schools comes from our transformation office in partnership with regional teams. The office is led by Executive Director of District and School Transformation, Mike Saban, who is here tonight to walk you through the presentation and assist with any questions you may have. We're also joined by two outstanding transformation school leaders, Leanne Hughes Odom from the Holmes Elementary and Darlene Marcano from the Dearborn STEM Academy. Both will speak to the impressive strides that are being made in their, in each of their schools. This quarterly update provides an opportunity to share several things, the mid-year submission of quality school plans and ninety day plans, equitable literacy updates, including instructional observation data, progress highlights from the Holmes Innovation School and the Dearborn STEM Academy, chronic absenteeism data and improvement strategy, and SY twenty four, twenty five hiring update. Uh, we will continue to monitor progress across three priority areas in conjunction with our improvement plans, student learning, school climate and attendance. And we're making adjustments to accelerate improvement. Our most pressing challenges, as you will see in the data, remain secondary school attendance and student growth and literacy. We continue to make adjustments and investments to accelerate this improvement, and at this point, I'll turn it over to Executive Director Saban.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, Superintendent Skipper, school committee members, it's good to be here presenting the third quarter transformation update. As the superintendent shared, this evening's update will focus on literacy, on attendance and on hiring. And I'm thrilled to be able to share my time this quarter with two wonderful transformation school leaders, Leanne Hughes Odom and Darlene Marcano. Before diving into details, I want to comment briefly on the school improvement planning process itself. All transformation schools submitted updated quality school plans in February, laying out strategic actions in equitable literacy, school climate and attendance. Supporting the development, the implementation and the monitoring of these plans is perhaps the most important role of the transformation office. As you have heard in other recent presentations from the Division of Schools and the Division of Academics, we are particularly focused right now on making sure that all students have a strong sense of belonging, have access to grade level curriculum and have good attendance. So let's start with instruction. The graphs in front of you summarize some of the results of over a thousand classroom observations done so far this year in transformation schools. A pattern evident here is informing our understanding of lagging student academic performance. We can see that over eighty percent of observed classrooms, represented in the circle on the left, showed evidence of grade level tasks. That's higher than last year and a great sign of rising expectations for our transformation students. However, a much lower percentage of classrooms showed students actually doing the hard work or doing higher order thinking. We know student learning will accelerate only when students have access to challenging grade level work and when they are both supported and held to high standards. We still have work to do to make sure that every one of our classrooms meets this description. The assessment data of our students, we believe, is the logical outcome of the pattern we observe in our classroom visits. This bar graph shows student growth during the first half of the school year in transformation non-high schools on the MAP reading test. We can see that nine of the twenty six schools represented by these bars exceeded the district average, and only three of those schools met or exceeded the national growth average of fifty. We expect better results. And we also look forward to learning from one of our brightest K to eight spots when Leanne Hughes Odom from the Holmes Innovation School presents in a few minutes. Yep, like that. This graph shows similar literacy results for our transformation high schools. We can see that six of the thirteen high schools exceeded the district average, and two of those schools met or exceeded the national average of fifty. As we have discussed in previous meetings, achievement gaps only start to close when student growth is above fifty. And this is the target level that we must achieve for all transformation schools. And you can see Dearborn at the high end of the high school growth. So now it's time to hear from our school leaders. We look forward to learning from the wisdom that these inspirational leaders are going to provide about what it has taken for their schools to achieve high literacy growth. The performance of these schools so far this year shows us that closing gaps in literacy is possible. So please join me in welcoming Holmes Innovation School Principal Leanne Hughes Odom, to be followed by school leader Darlene Marcano from the Dearborn STEM Academy. Leanne?
All right, thank you. So, good evening. My name is Leanne Hughes Odom, and I am the proud principal of the Holmes Innovation School, which we call in-house the greatest elementary school in the city of Boston. Key phrase, a work in progress. The Holmes Innovation School is located in the heart of Dorchester. We currently serve two hundred and eighty nine students, in which a hundred percent of our students are young, gifted and brilliant, and come from the blackest and brownest neighborhoods of Roxbury, Dorchester and Mattapan. When I think about the transformational work and the results we have gained thus far, I think about my core values as a black woman principal. I am Boston-born, Dorchester-raised and a product of the Boston Public School System. I spent the last three decades in BPS as a former student, as an educator, a foster parent, transformational coach, and now first year principal. Every career decision I have made has been about coming back and giving back to a city that really raised me. And I know firsthand from my personal and professional experiences that relationships move the work. So when I walked into the homes, it was important that I collaborated with the people on the ground rather than colonize spaces. It was important that I embraced this idea that good principals never forget what it feels like to be an educator in the classroom. So my first ninety days of my principalship, I met with the custodians, the lunch monitors, every educator, students, families, and I asked, oh, how can we be great? From there, the data I collected allowed me to build a theory of action. So I believed, and this was like deep down in my heart, if we are a highly relational and purposeful organization that cultivates and affirms the geniuses of adults through high-quality professional development spaces and on-demand and live coaching, then we can strengthen tier-one instructional practices for students. Our climate data, as a result of that, increased by fifty seven percentage points, and our professional learning indicator increased by sixty two percentage points in less than ninety days. I really contribute this to two factors. First, the mindset slash conditions we set in our professional learning spaces. And then, second, the intentional work we have done with our quality school plan. Week after week, through feedback sessions with our ILT and weekly surveys, we progress monitored the effectiveness of our strategic initiatives, both for culture and climate and professional learning. And next, and I know this about myself, when I walk into spaces, I walk into spaces with my blackness and like critical consciousness. So it's important in my leadership to emphasize that black and brown students from neighborhoods like mine can do complex work and be held to high academic expectations. So it is the expectation that black and brown kids at the homes could do really hard things. Next, and we know this, and research has shown that task predicts performance. So at the homes, we shifted to ensure and we put high-quality instructional materials in front of students and co-constructed these non-negotiables as a staff. We are, and we say this with pride, well-planned, lesson plans and critical consumption of materials are non-negotiables. Our instruction is culturally responsive. It is our goal to bring lessons to life and ensure that they are real. to life and ensure that they are real, relevant, relatable for our young people. And lastly, we are engaging and provide access, access meaning it's our collective responsibility to teach every child and not just some. This intentionality has transferred into classrooms, and it is evident in our academic achievement data and equitable literacy data that you can see in this next slide. And while we are excited about this data and realize we have so much work to do, it is our hope that if we maintain these conditions that we set and hold students to high expectations, every child at the Holmes will be a proficient reader. Finally, I just want to thank folks like Dr. Monica Hall, Mike Saban, Dr. Pauline Lugera White, and my academic suit, who's the GOAT, Mary Drisco, alongside the entire teaching staff at the Holmes for being vision and mission-aligned and for believing in my leadership. Being a first-year school leader in 2024 is incredibly hard, but such a humbling and rewarding experience. And it's because of folks like them who are in service to schools like mine in the blackest and brownest neighborhoods that we are able to row in the same directions. So thank you, and I'm gonna pass it over to my big sis, Darlene.
Thank you, Leann. I just want to say, Leann is absolutely incredible. You just inspired me. Phenomenal. Good evening, everyone. My name is Darlene Marcano, and I've had the privilege to serve as the Dearborn's Head of School for the past five years. The Dearborn is a grade six-through-twelve open enrollment early college school in Roxbury. We serve five-hundred-and-forty-nine students, most of whom come through one of our four neighborhood elementary schools. Our mission is to graduate students with the twenty-first century skills required for college and career success, prepared to serve as thoughtful, engaged citizens who contribute to the health, vibrancy, and development of their community. On a side note, the Dearborn has truly become my second family. So we first began working on improving our professional culture. Similar to what Leann said, we needed to start with the adults first. The internal coherence survey, internal coherence rubric, and the staff panorama survey have been instrumental as tools to help us both reflect, plan, and also focus our work to improve coherence at the Dearborn. There are nine domains in the survey that provide us with valuable data to consider as we work to build systems to work in an integrated way. And this is where I go off script, because unfortunately, what I've seen in the past is most staff members were doing their own thing. And I think what we did was we sort of supported them in that, but we knew we needed coherence in order to build a better system in service of our students. So I want to first show you the results over time for two of the areas connected with professional culture. The first is team shared understanding of effective practice, and I believe that's the one at the top, and collaboration around an improved strategy. The second graph that you see is from the staff panorama survey. It shows improved results over the past two years. And so what you see in all three data points is within the past two to three years, we've steadily improved when it comes to being very intentional around our students and around our professional culture. This internal coherence work over the past two and a half years, and even surveys, rubrics, have helped to guide systemic improvements and focus. We were able to make changes to our schedule to allow us to have grade-level and content team meetings during the day, which allowed us to continue our work that we do during professional development time. We also crafted opportunities for our staff to take on leadership responsibilities. And what we've seen is increased trust amongst staff, resulting in video peer observations, which is not easy for us to do. And overall, we've experienced collaboration across all contents. After making the intentional decision to stay the course with our instructional focus, we have seen an increase in literacy. Our professional learning is connected to the work that's done in both grade-level and content teams, all focused around our multilingual learners. And in case many people don't know, the Dearborn has over sixty-five percent either current or former multilingual learners. The areas that we focused on were improving students' abilities to have academic conversations and also to do content-based writing, both without lowering the rigor of the task. All staff engaged with the speaking/writing WITA rubric. And lastly, again, similar to Leann, we use district-approved, high-quality instructional material in all content areas and have reading interventions in place. We specifically use curriculum in ESL and literacy classes. We worked on the development of language across content, again focused around academic conversations and content-based writing. We created opportunities for peer observation connected to our instructional focus, and we also implemented the rewards program in middle school and have two reading interventionists, one in middle school and one in high school. Both work diligently to help students improve their reading. As you can see, these carefully crafted decisions were not made within the administrative circle or in an administrative bubble, but with the implementation of community input. We have made it a point to have transparency as the cornerstone of our professional development and have seen that foster into the bonds of trust and kinship. Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene, and thank you, Leann. We'll have a chance to ask them follow-up questions in just a few minutes. So we know how hard you both work and how much thought and energy is invested in your students and your staff. And I've noticed that your survey results show that students and teachers love your school communities, and I think we can see why. These two schools are examples of our BPS improvement strategy in action, and their work points us to our next steps for all schools. We must continue toward full implementation of grade-level curriculum in all schools and all classrooms. Excuse me. You heard that theme in both sets of comments. We must work together to develop and implement strategies to engage and challenge all students. And we must further improve our coaching and professional development in support of these conditions in every BPS classroom. Our students can excel, and it's our responsibility to ensure that we have the expectations, the conditions, and the skill to support them. I will now transition to brief updates on student attendance and on the launch of the hiring season this spring. The graph in front of you shows rates of chronic absenteeism in our Transformation schools. The good news in the dark blue bars is that there is a continued reduction in chronic absenteeism at all levels compared to the end of March last year. Thanks to the hard work of our educators, our supervisors of attendance, and of course, our students and their families, we are seeing our absenteeism rates come steadily downwards. At the same time, the chronic absenteeism rates for our Transformation schools, particularly our high schools, simply remain unacceptably high. As always, we disaggregate our data by subgroup as well as by grade level. We can see here that all subgroups in our Transformation schools have higher absenteeism rates than the same subgroups in non-Transformation schools. This wide gap shows that we still have a broad systemic issue to address. Our Transformation School students simply cannot be successful in close achievement gaps and learning gaps if their absenteeism rates are this much higher than other students. Looking toward the spring and the upcoming school year, we will continue our strategy of strengthening student engagement and sense of belonging while also partnering deeply with families. In addition, we need new and creative strategies for our high school students, and we're excited to learn from the Win the Day Project Pilot Attendance Improvement Project that Corey McCarthy and his team are leading right now in Region Eight. As is the case across the country, our schools need help in this area. We need the whole community to come together in support of getting all of our students back into school. Finally, let's end on a high note and with a big shout-out to the BPS Office of Human Resources and to our school leaders. We can see on this slide that one year ago, as of April 3rd, 2023, Transformation schools had filled sixteen percent of their vacancies. This year, by April 3rd, we had filled thirty-two percent of our vacancies, double the rate and actually more than double the number of hires. And I checked the hiring data this morning, which of course I do every day, and this percentage is now up to forty percent, and it goes up every day. This progress reflects the hard work of Office of Human Capital to post vacancies early and the amazing efforts of our busy school leaders and their teams to act quickly to fill these positions. We know that early hiring leads to more diverse and more skilled workforce, so this improvement is likely to make a big difference for students in the future. On that note, we close our presentation, and we welcome your questions. We know there is much more work to do, but we're also proud to have been able to share some highlights and some real signs of progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saban, Ms. Hughes Odom, and Ms. Marcano. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments.
Thank you for the presentation. It is great to see the progress that's happening in real time, for sure. Just going through the entirety, because I have a bunch of questions. I'm looking at slide, I guess, four, just a little bit around the observation tool itself. Could you speak a little bit more to what constitutes heavy lifting during a lesson? That's one of the things I want clarification on.
That is a great question and one that's asked a lot within BPS. Do either of you want to take that?
I can talk about it. So, heavy lifting refers to who's actually doing the work. For example, if you're in a classroom and the expectation is that students are to complete a task, maybe they're supposed to do partner work, but unfortunately, what happens is it's more teacher-directed, teacher-led, and the voice that you hear the most is the teacher. That means the heavy lifting, the actual work, the thinking. The thinking may be happening with students, but we're not hearing it. What we're hearing is the teacher's thinking.
Okay, okay. And then it would actually, well, I'm trying to think about when this tool was implemented, also seeing this, what this would have looked like, also comparatively in 2022 to 2023, too. So at some point, I'd love to see how this might look, just looking back. Another question I have is just related to particularly like chronic absenteeism. You spoke a little bit about one of the initiatives that you found to be particularly, I think, rewarding, or at least looking like it's moving in the right direction. How are you sharing that with other institutions and thinking about that from that standpoint?
Thank you. I'll take that. There are a lot of different initiatives going on in schools across the district in attendance, and we're monitoring those very, very carefully. I think we've concluded that our high schools need some additional help beyond the school-level initiatives, and there's an exciting pilot going on that I shouldn't represent too much myself, but it's being led by Corey McCarthy and his team with a group of schools in Region Eight, and they're calling it Win the Day. And it has a range of outreach, incentives, and motivational activities being conducted to impact the schools in Region Eight. And I believe it's going for, will be going for fifty days through the spring, and we'll learn a lot from the results of that. They're doing a lot, and they're keeping track of the efforts, so we're very excited to see the results of that.
Yeah, the idea of Win the Day came from the kids. We actually got a group of students. We work with BSAC, and Chief McCarthy, they kind of designed all of the material for it, including what the students felt would motivate students or would help address some of the underlying issues of why they weren't coming to school. And at the high school level, you know, things like homelessness or home insecurity is like a big one for them, mental health issues, work, and having to make money. So we're really trying to design from the incentive sides, like linking kids with jobs and, you know, working to make sure like you have buddies so that when you're not there, you're seen, like people are gonna reach out. And to Leann's point, it's about relationship at day's end. And so kids knowing that when I'm not there, people notice, that makes a difference. So sometimes a text message, sometimes an email or a phone call. So there's like a whole tiering of it. We decided to isolate Region Eight because we wanted to figure out what works and doesn't work about the pilot, and the plan is for September to be able to roll it across the regions. You can also earn time back through creative ways, you know, by doing some vacation stuff or after-school stuff. There's different ways to be able to earn your way back from being chronically absent.
And my last question, at least for right now, is, one, it's also great to see the hiring update. My question then comes on, I guess, the other side of that, is knowing, are there differences that we see in transformational schools versus non-Transformation schools with regard to retention? And how are we addressing that?
That is a really good question. We have not looked carefully yet at that particular data point, but one pattern that we know is that when jobs are filled late in late hiring, there end up being licensure issues. And then licensure issues lead to high turnover. So the early hiring makes it much more likely that properly credentialed people are hired who can stay in those positions. So your hypothesis that probably there's higher turnover is true. There's a lot of high-vacancy schools on our list, and this early hiring is part of trying to change that. We don't feel like we see an outflow of teachers because they do not appreciate their jobs or they're trying to leave, but we see a lot of those licensure problems or difficulties in hard-to-fill positions that we don't ever manage to get the right teacher in.
I think it's also stability of leadership, you know, because when you keep the principal corps stable and you invest in the principal corps, then staff feel more confident in that school and that school community. And it takes, as I think our leaders know, several years to turn a culture in a building. And so it's gonna be really important that we're investing in Leann as a first-year principal, who's amazing, but making her even more amazing by investing in her, as much as it is important that we're supporting Darlene, who, though five years at Dearborn, has a wealth of leadership prior. So we have to look at our principals and invest in our principals in a way we haven't been. And that's created turnover in our principal corps in past years, which in part creates turnover in our teacher corps.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have just a couple of questions. Again, my questions are very simple. First of all, back to slide four, that my colleague here raised regarding the instruction quarters when he raised heavy lifting and things of that nature. Am I to accept that... Am I to accept that, let's say, look at the heavy lifting and the other, the third circle? Am I to accept that the 27% of heavy lifting from students is acceptable at this point? And also the 41.4% of students demonstrating inferential comprehension? Is that something that we can live with?
You want to talk about that?
I understand that. You're presenting these as achievement.
Yeah.
In my mind, they're not.
So thank you for your question. No, it's not acceptable. I think it describes a process we're going through that we're learning about as we do it. We've seen that the alignment of tasks to standards, meaning grade-level standards, has increased significantly. We'll make sure we provide that data because we actually do have that compared to the past.
Yeah.
So that has gone up. And that's part, you heard both of our leaders talk about implementing the district curriculum, high-quality instructional materials. The reason we're so focused on that is because that is a form of grade-level expectation. And that's helping us to raise the level of expectation. But if you have a grade-level text, but the teacher reads it out loud instead of the students reading it, that's not a heavy lift. The right text is there, but the student's not doing the work yet. And the next shift we're focusing on is how teachers use that curriculum. And we're learning that this has stages. And we feel very positive that we're seeing change, but we also know that the schools that are out ahead of achievement, their data for that middle circle looks different. I've been in both of their schools, and these leaders emphasize the middle circle as well as the curriculum. And that's, those are the footsteps or the path that we think we need to follow. Andrew, you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo. So like, for example, when you walk into the homes, where we're trying to go is this like 21st century learning. We're shifting from like lecture style to this idea that like kids are really, really owning the work. And that's a, that's a teacher shift as well. So when they're coming in, they're not just, you know, lecturing kids over and over and over again. Because my kids will like tap out and like turn the classroom up, right? And so like, how are they creating experiences where they're going into the curriculum? They're dissecting the curriculum, they're consuming the curriculum and making the curriculum pop. So students are really owning the work because the research continues to show like, if they own it, if they're doing the heavy lifting, then they'll internalize that information, right? Which like ends up executing into like results. And so I just wanted to just emphasize that, Mike.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one other piece that I think is just as important. I think we also need to look at values. Because if we're talking about low expectations and we're thinking about a teacher doing all of the work, then the expectation is really low. And so then I have to think about, well, is that part of your value? That our students can't do the work? And so I think those things need to be surfaced first, which is why I think it's important to start off with professional culture. Because if we truly understand how a person sees our children, then we can really understand whether or not they're the right fit for our schools.
Just, I appreciate your answer. Just a follow-up question on that. Your presentation indicates that the curriculum that are implementing at your institutions for the students, even though the rate of achievement according to those two circles are kind of low. You know, heavy lifting and inferential ability? How do you, well, my concern is, given those low number, are we certain, are we very certain that those curriculums, curricula or whatever, are appropriate for this classroom? I understand, you know, educational teachers training and all, teachers instructional techniques and all that, understand all that. It's just, if the number is that low, are we sure the curriculums are high quality?
You're asking a fair question. I don't think we could say we are certain until it happens. But the curriculum has research behind it. It is successful in many places. It's successful in many classrooms and some whole schools. So we have evidence and we have research to suggest that it can work, but it's not easy. And it's the intersection of the curriculum and instructional expertise and belief systems that's needed. And those aren't easy things. So we're on a path that, we have a lot of confidence in the path, but it's not simple. So we anticipate seeing increasing numbers of schools following the path that we see Dearborn on and we see Homes and other schools on. And I hope that each time we present, we're going to have more of those examples. And I'm confident that we will.
May I have just two more short questions, very short?
Okay.
The number of teachers that you submit, that you submitted for hire or to be hired? There's no way we can tell whether they are hired? Because I believe that is, you know, the percentage that you submit or that you presented to us incorporate both type of students, both type of candidates?
And... There are two categories. There's the submitted for hire, and then there's actually hired, which is a part of that. And just, there's a lot of data whenever I present, so I tried to simplify it a little bit. But we actually have the data in that division of hired and submitted for hire. And right now, of the 40% today that was submitted, about 20%, about half of those are actually hired and the other half are in process. We hope they won't have a problem and they'll work their way through, but it isn't completed. So that is, that is a fair question.
I see. Just the last comment, chronic absenteeism. I have same questions like yours. I noticed that the, you know, with the transformation schools, multi-learner, English learner, students with disability are pretty high. I hope that you are going to somehow focus other strategies to bring that down. Because student with disability, 47%, English learner, 38%, chronic absenteeism. It's pretty high. Or in my own assessment, it's excessively high. So I hope, I'm just appealing to you to find other ways to lower that.
Comment on that or anything else before you...
Thank you.
You're staying, okay. I think we agree.
Yeah.
When we're sharing, the superintendent can comment further, but we're sharing information that sometimes presents us with a challenge. We're not at all saying it looks the way it should. We're presenting it as part of the path toward improvement, and we would all agree that's troubling.
Yeah. And I think, I think with the chronic absenteeism, what we're seeing is that this pattern and actually with students with disability and English language learners as well, that that pattern is following at the state level and it's following at the national level. I think that we, we see it as a citywide effort where it's about bringing parents in as partners to this so that they see 18 days, which is the definition of chronic absenteeism, is a lot of time. We're coming off of the pandemic where we kind of gave the message that students didn't need to be in school to learn. And that was a dangerous message. It was, it was necessary at that time, but it never, ever could replace the magic that happens and the learning that happens when kids are in school. So we're working back from that. And I think at the high school level, it's also a lot of practical issues that are going on for kids. Some kids have become the contributors to income in their families. And a lot of the overaged, unaccompanied minors that we're getting, there's, it's a survival issue. It's not that they don't want to come to school, they can't. And so that's why as a district, we're trying to put more broader solutions that our principals can't control. But for instance, opening up, you know, a new program. So any, any of our multilingual learners who are 18 to 22 can get a different schedule. You don't have to go and start in a regular high school where they're just going to be forced to not go. So we, as a district, have to help with that. You know, in addition to all the work these guys are doing, which is calling parents, knocking on doors, home visits, like making those deep connections.
Thank you.
Mr. Carr, anyone else?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation, and you both are incredible and we're so lucky. Kids are lucky for your work and we're lucky to learn about it and hear about it. So thank you. I'm trying to figure out where to start. I always ask a series of similar questions so you can suspect what's coming. I guess on a process piece. Oh, all my gratitude didn't make it into the microphone, but thank you for everything you're doing. And it is hard work and we are lucky to have you. On a process question, I am just saying, and I will bring this up in new business, I submitted a bunch of questions. None of them were even, they weren't even not responded to. They just like were not responded to at all. It wasn't like we can't get it or we'll get it to you eventually. They're just like radio silence, including the follow-up to the questions. We have a process problem. I'm naming it here. We need to bring it up in new business on how we're going to solve it. And so I guess the big, so like moving on from that, I won't ask you every question I had because I think it will be, it would have helped me in this conversation, but I don't think it would be fair in this moment to like go through the data, specific questions that I had that I thought would make sense to see in the PowerPoint. So a few questions now, just moving into real stuff. I am curious on slide five and slide six, as we're looking at growth. And this is always my struggle as we talk about these schools because we'll talk about these schools and we sum all of the data together. And in a few weeks, we're going to talk about the exam schools, and we'll separate all their data and we'll talk about each school as an individual school. And then when we have the conversations about these schools, we just sort of like lump it together and give us no names. But as we see sort of homes with a growth of in the 60s or 60, and then we see this school at the bottom 23rd, I guess I'm sort of curious, like, while I want to celebrate the hard work, my eye is always on the most vulnerable kids who are being underserved. And so like, I'm celebrating everything you guys are doing. And also very curious about, like, when we're seeing a 23% growth. One, what is, who is that school? Where is that school? And then what's the plan and like the sort of viability around that? And I think the same is true as we look at the other school on the other side. Again, with no names, which is just like some real talk of, every time we've had this conversation, I've said we have to name the schools that we're talking about.
So, so first, Darlene is a hard-working school leader. She started at 7:00 AM and she's off to another school event. Bless her. So on her behalf, I really appreciate if she could be here, but she's not even going home.
Save yourself and have a wonderful night.
But Leanne can follow up my answer to this with her own thoughts. But we look very intensively at data of individual schools. We do not sum data for analysis. It's school by school because that's where change happens. In terms of public sharing of information, we have shared a lot of individual school data linked to this presentation. It includes updated attendance rates for individual schools and a lot of other detailed information. One data point that we're not sharing publicly is the interim data on the map reading and math assessment. And we have some beliefs that there's a reason for that. We don't want that assessment to turn into a highly stressful, high-stakes assessment for students and for teachers, which is what MCAS is. And we believe that is what would happen if that became a public indicator. It's part of our continuous improvement process. We look at it in great detail, not just by school, but by grade level and even by classroom and individual student. Its most important use is within each school, organizing supports for students. But we do use it extensively centrally. But we have the policy that it would be counterproductive to share that too publicly because it would change the nature of its use for the school and the teachers and the students. But I would open it up if you have any comments or thoughts about that as a, as a school leader.
No, I just think we try to just set the conditions that every exam, whether it's a unit assessment or the MAP exam matters, and that we're just not competing within our region, but also within our state and nationally as well. And so our kids just come in excited and ready to go. So I do think some of this is just like, we, we set the conditions that this, this just matters at the homes. And it allows us to know, like, are you grade-level ready? And are you ready for the next grade? So I think our kids come in with just a different mindset on how they approach the exam. And we too try to not make it high stakes, but it's, it matters for us and it matters for our educators. So yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just say, remember, in the Excel spreadsheet that was provided, there is really good detailed data in there that is definitely worth a look. That includes every school broken down by state accountability, chronic absenteeism, both midpoint and endpoint, so first 90 days and then end of March, and then what that changes, as well as MCAS ELA, MCAS Math, and shows both the growth as well as the meets and exceeds. So I think that's actually, I think, going to be really helpful in understanding sort of where the schools align. If it would be more helpful to like provide it...
We didn't get that spreadsheet. We have an email with three, a school presentation, the equity impact statement, and a cover memo. So just...
Can you just clarify where it is?
Okay. So the email we got, I can send it to you, Megan. And the email we got, it can be, then it's buried. The email we got is three, a presentation. I'm just like, I'm not getting checked on this in this meeting. If there is three, if there's an email with three bullets and it's like, look at these three things, those are the three things I'm looking at. I can go dig around for an Excel spreadsheet. I love that that conversation's happening, but like if it's valuable, that's what we're looking at. And just, I'm really keeping it real. My email wasn't even responding. It wasn't like, hey, Brandon, go search this Excel spreadsheet.
Well, I think, I think one of the things is in the glorious half hour that you and I get to spend every week, I think if there is something at that point that you feel hasn't been given, I would be more than happy to get team on there or to get you whatever you need to be able to make the decisions and ask the questions. So I think we can put that in place kind of quickly. But I do also, one of the other suggestions, this is in a numerical format. I also think sometimes visually, it's kind of easy to kind of look if it were graphic. And so what's nice about the midpoint data is it shows sort of where the schools fall. Might be just very easy to transform that so that it's much more easier kind of to the eye. But there's a lot of really good, rich data. So we'll just make sure we review so that you know you have what you need.
Moving on from process, I am, I appreciate what you're saying, right? Around the discretion around the data, and so I want to honor that. I also want to, this is a tough one, right? Because these are our lowest-performing schools, which on some level in a choice system require the most transparency for families. There is a, we are making a decision, a pointed decision, to share the highest performing outcomes and a decision to not share the lowest ones. And so food for thought, for me, that is like a complex thing to grapple with, where it's like, I will tell you who's making 50, who's at the, exceeding the city standard, but I won't tell you who is not even cutting to half of it. And that, I think, impacts Black and Latino kids in really deep ways. And I think we have some soul-searching around that level of transparency. And I have felt that way in a lot of our conversations, you know? And I, I am so thankful for your work. I think it's hard work, but I, I, I'm just keeping it real. I think this, I guess the second piece on it, and this is the most important, I owe... I think this, I guess the second piece on it, and this is the most important, I always ask this, sort of what's next? So like, what is our standard for acceptable growth and unacceptable growth? And when is a school no longer a viable option for a family? I want to invest in adults getting the belief systems down and learning all the instructional moves they can get, but not while my kid is waiting for them to build those skills. And so I'm like, there are schools that have been on this list for years. And when is it no longer something we stand behind and say, this is an actual choice for you?
I think I would hesitate to weigh in on a decision at that level, but it's not acceptable for schools to continually have low academic growth, to have low survey scores around climate and safety and professional learning, to have chronic absenteeism higher than average. And our whole school improvement planning process on these ninety day cycles is based on that information and setting goals for improvement. And I think what we're learning to do as a schools division and as a school department is to find the appropriate balance of intervention and support to move schools. We see some moving. We see others that are more stuck. We have to figure out how to do that and what the right combination of supports is to move that. Some of the schools, I won't tell you anything you don't completely know, but it's complicated because some schools are beloved by students, but have one of those indicators low. Some have academic indicators that are high, but have other issues. It's a complex mix. So what our department is thinking about is instruction, climate and attendance. How do we get those three areas moving steadily forward? And the other thing I would just add that we have to always keep in mind about growth is fifty is the average, but it's mathematically designed that half are below average and half are above. So while we expect every school to be above, half the schools in Massachusetts and half the schools nationally taking MAP are going to be below fifty. We're pushing hard to have our schools all be above. We have more coaching than other schools. We have certain resources that other schools don't. Our students can do it. So we want and expect them to be above fifty, but we do have to keep in mind mathematically, everyone can't be above fifty. Growth is designed for half to be below that. So one of the reasons we look at the whole group of schools is that we will start to feel that our transformation strategy and our BPS strategy is working when we see two-thirds of our schools above that fifty rather than one-third. In high school, it's six out of thirteen. We're getting close. High school literacy is actually progressing. But so that's just something for us always to keep in mind.
Yeah. And I, I think, um, the other thing I would say is, uh, knowing, like, um, how important school choice is. Uh, the school choice is we've unpacked it with parents has at each grade, at kind of the different grade levels, a different meaning. For some parents, the tiering of the school, the academic tiering, isn't the thing they most look at. Same for students. It could be the type of programming that's being offered. It could be the proximity to home, which we see for parents is super important. It could be the access to a dual language program. So we can't really just look through one lens when we talk about how school performance impacts school choice or could impact school choice. I think what we've been saying with the long-term facilities plan is that we are trying to accomplish two things. One is increase the number of seats in all of our schools relative to the high quality student experience and do it in proximity to where people live.
Yep.
Those are the two things that I think if we can do, and that student experience includes things like programming, includes, uh, different kinds of offerings, uh, includes early college at the secondary level or at the elementary may, uh, you know, may include enrichment opportunities after school. That student experience is kind of all encompassing of that. So I think that is really the goal of what we're trying to do. That said, uh, we've taken, we, we say decades, it's far longer than decades to get to the point where we are. And so it is going to take time, much like it does at a school. You know, if you were to look at homes before Leanne came.
Say that.
Would say, hmm, look at that school, right? But it's transformed because you have an incredible leader that's tapped into, as she put it, the genius of an incredible staff and the genius of incredible kids. So what can happen with the right supports can often help a school that we would have said or probably written and said, ah, that, that school can't do that as a, well, actually it can't. So I think, I think this is an evolving picture. I think the long-term facilities plan is attempting with data and with the rubric to allow people to be able to look at schools in any ways they want. If it's about proximity, great. If it's about the high quality student experience, great. If it's about particular kinds of programming, great. They can look at it because it, we're not going to replace what parents want.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the place that as we start to think about looking at optimizing the district from a size perspective and a quality perspective, we just want to make sure that, that the community and the parents are able and the students are able to look at the same data that we're able to look at and have in the rubric, a tool to help them do so more easily.
I'm, I hear you and at this, and I'm with you, like, part of why I'm, I'm always asking about this is like, as we right-size the system, and then at the same, we are grappling with like, then what school and what schools and where? And then at the same time, as we start most of our meetings with a lot of platitudes around like world-class education and all this stuff, like graduating kids from, that, that means those are the choices we're going to present to families that like fit into those values. And so having a history of kids leaving schools with low levels of literacy is not a world-class education. And so like, that is no longer a viable choice in the portfolio of options. And so I just think like, there are some of that. And while I agree, like, we can have a fabulous leader who can turn around the school. There may have been a time, I don't know the history, where a lot of kids were still graduating while we were waiting for that right leader to come with low levels of literacy. And like, that's on our watch and that's may have still, two things can be true. Great choice today and not a great choice for the years that we were waiting around. And how long is the right time to wait?
Right. That's the reason why, in addition to hiring fantastic, Leanne, not picking on you, but fantastic leaders like you. In addition to that, that's only one solution. You have to lift the system. That's a systemic solution. And that's actually what Mike and the team are attempting to do. He, with Mike, it's about the transformation schools, but with Drew and School Soups, it's about the whole system, right? You can't do just one. And our focus now on literacy is extremely important across the district. We've never had a time where we can begin to say we have high-quality instructional materials in all our classrooms and an observational tool to begin to ensure that high-quality instruction at grade level is happening in every classroom. We've never done that. We've done all kinds of other calibration. I've been a part of over many, many years. And I'm sure there's people in this room who have been, but it's never been to the level that it is. And that is actually, that we'll never close our, our way out of poor performance. That it doesn't work like that. We have to make sure that yes, there's an optimizing to the system that has to happen, but we have to get at the root causes of what led to some schools being so disproportionate in this and other schools not. And we're working through those systems and it does take time to do that. But in the meantime, the things we can do in our control is make sure the materials and the instruction are to par. And that's what we're working on.
I'm over my time.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am chair. So let's continue the conversation about high-quality instructional materials, if we may. And I'm interested to hear, particularly as a school leader, thank you for your presentation. Um, delighted to hear what's going on at the home. So I'd love to hear from your viewpoint as a school leader. How did you choose the curriculum that you are using? I don't know if you're using Focus in the early years or Fish Tank or something else. I'm interested in what you chose and, um, the thought process you went through. And then I'm interested in from across the transformational schools, you know, what the latitude is on school leaders on that. And at what point does a district say, it's not working for you, you're, you're using a different one?
Mm-hmm. Um, so when I walked into the homes, we were using EL for our upgrades with third through six and then Focus and Focus on three for our early elementary grades. Um, I think our biggest thing this year has been about really just unpacking every unit. And again, I'm really consistent and on brand about making, after like unpacking every unit in our CPTs and professional learn, in our PDs as well, is, um, having teachers like consume it and have conversations on it and having them, you know, get in front of students and, you know, have students even give them feedback on if, you know, the, um, the, how quality the, the lesson is. So I think, you know, there wasn't really a lot of conversation on choice, but I think for us, the conversation was like, how do we continue to just weave life into the, the, um, curriculum that we're using? I think EL sometimes could be hard, but for me, and I say this to my staff, just all the time is we just have to continue to, you know, to sell it to our young people. We had a, um, biodiversity unit that most folks would say like black and brown kids are not interested in like science and our teachers just like made it pop. And students are walking around like, oh, I want to be a scientist because I understand that scientists in this country can make a hundred thousand dollars, right? And so that was one of our biggest things and it's something we're still working through, like as a new school leader.
Do you feel you have, is it your choice on what curriculum you have in your school?
Um, I think, you know, my academic coaches and I, like, we, we talk about the different, you know, curriculums that are out there, but right now, our whole thing is like stay on brand and like stay the course. And so because we have been using EL in our school, we're going to just continue to use EL. I think in a school like mine, the, the consistency is important. Like we can't continue to say, oh, we're going to use this curriculum one month. We're going to shift to this curriculum next month. Cause as you know, the research continues to use to show like sometimes when teachers have a little bit too much autonomy within the curriculum, they're not putting grade level content in front of students. Um, and so for us, it's just about the consistency and staying on course, staying on brand for now.
So Mr. Saban, could you address a little bit about the, how school leaders are choosing curriculum? And, and particularly at what point does the district intervene? If we're at, you know, one of these lower percentages and say, is it the curriculum? Is it, is it school leadership? Is it the professional development? You know, what is it that needs to change?
So first I preface my comments by saying, folks from the academics department would be probably better suited to answer your question.
I just, I was looking over.
But I will give it a shot. Um, I think we're in a different era in terms of curriculum than we were in during my nineteen years of being a principal. You hear the term HQIM all over the country now. And in the state of Massachusetts, you're seeing much more guidance than there used to be around what curriculum to use. There are lists of vetted and research-based curriculum at the state level, which Massachusetts did not have before. And then there are lists in the district, a subset of those of the state list that are district recommended. And we call those HQIM, but really they're research-based and, um, fully developed curricula. And transformation schools don't have choice not to do that. They, there was some limited choice within those lists and different subjects, but our expectation is that schools use that curriculum. And what we're learning is that, first of all, no curriculum is perfect. We know that. It's the intersection, as we talked about, of instructional expertise, belief systems and relationships and a curriculum. But in the current moment in education, the expertise of the teacher goes into the relationships and the belief systems, the instructional moves, and they're not spending all their time developing the curriculum. They're learning a curriculum that experts have developed and implementing it. And we know the previous approach worked in some places and not others. This new approach, we're in the process of exploring it. Having lived under the other model as a teacher and a principal, I appreciated it, but I'm all in on this because it was very inconsistent, what we did before. And so this is not easy, but my personal belief system and hearing from leaders like Leanne and Darlene who are making this work in their schools is that this can work. And we've moved with adopting the curriculum and now we're moving with implementing it. And I think that's a good path where we're not reinventing the wheel each year as we probably used to when you just switch a curriculum and you're back to day one or you take over a classroom as a new teacher and there's nothing there. That's happened to many educators. We should never do that to anyone. And so I, I'm hopeful that this new approach is going to work.
Yeah. And superintendent, you can tell if this is the right time to push deep on this or if you're planning a, a different presentation later about, you know, equitable literacy and, and where it's going. I'm just interested in, um, you know, obviously we've pushed a lot of chips to the middle of the table on this. And, and that's great. It's a very thoughtful approach. It's a big focus. As the superintendent said, this is the first time, I'm certainly here that this district has the pieces in place on it. I also know that there are a range being used around the district and some are seeing great results, some are not. And so particularly with transformation, I'm interested in, if these are the schools that are lowest performing, when are we going to push and say, okay, we're either going to change school leadership or we're going to change the curriculum or we're going to change the professional developer approach, right? Because you said it's a combination, you had a beautiful way to phrase it, much, much better than I did. Um, but I'm just wondering the thought process of the district, and I'm not sure if this is for the academic team or the regional soups or you, Mr. Saban, or even for the superintendent. Like, at what point do you look at some of these that aren't improving as well as the homes is? And congratulations on that, um, and say, we need to make a change. And not, not to the point of a closing, but we need to change curriculum. We need to change leadership. We need to change professional development. We need, something's not working in this school.
I think we're at that point and that's what we do. Um, we are as regions, under the guidance of the regional superintendents, in schools every day, looking at curriculum that now the regional people are expert in, as are the school people, with a common tool describing the instruction we want to see and developing improvement plans every ninety days that are based on how are the students doing and what are they saying? So I think we're at that point and hopefully it feels like a combination of support and teamwork and pressure. It's meant to be both of those. I hope it feels that way, but I think we're at the point you're describing now.
I appreciate the work going on and I know this is a mid-year update. And you're saying every ninety days, there's a test or there's a, a fresh look. I mean, at some point it's, okay, we're making changes. And I'm not sure if it's the end of a year or something like that. So I'll, I'll, I'll put a pin in that conversation as I hear it too often in, in the day.
Yeah. So I, I'm just, I'm, I'm just thinking about, um, what, what I know about school, um, performance and design. Um, I think that the three areas that the transformation unit has picked are the right areas. Um, because at least in the case of the non-literacy side, uh, students can't learn if they're not in school. And the school culture itself has a lot to do with how teachers and staff build relationships and implement what's being given to them. So you can have really good curriculum, but you can still have poor instruction. You can have really good curriculum and pretty good instruction and still have a poor culture in a school that means students aren't learning. And you can have in some of our schools, real over-representation that we've created of special education and multilingual learners, where there becomes real tipping points in the school as to how to provide enough service. And I think our transformation schools represent a lot of all of that. Um, so I, you know, this is one where I think the ninety-day cycle is the right cycle to unpack and look for change and then recommend change. And I think that's what the calibration of the academics office, transformation unit and the school soups, it's that kind of working together to ensure that we're really looking at that ninety days and not letting so much time goes by that if we're not seeing correction, we've lost the year. So they're in there constantly making that change.
I think on the curriculum side, we have, you know, we have thirty, I don't know, thirty-five autonomous schools still, I think. I think autonomous schools have always seen curriculum in their domain to be able to, you know, do things differently. Even the autonomous schools have really bought in in a deep way to working with the academic office around high quality materials. It doesn't mean they're adopting something on the list, but it means that there's a process by which they can take their materials and vet them. And so I think on the curriculum side, I think we can ask Leslie Ryan, excuse me, Leslie Ryan Miller to come to a future one and just kind of talk a little bit more about it. But I think the, the part here, I see the power. I think the, the part I don't want to lose here is that it is about the whole, Leanne used the term rowing. And this is about all the adults rowing in the right direction. And that's everybody from the custodian up to the principal. Everybody knows what they're doing, what they have for resources, who the kids are, what their relationships need to be, and they're rowing. And it's, that is the part that when we insert really high quality curriculum, when we insert uh, tools for which they can look at what's happening within their own classrooms, uh, when we insert tools, we give them around chronic absenteeism, it's that rowing in the right direction that actually wins the race. And that's, I think, what we see in these two schools is that for a variety of reasons, they've been able to get those things to click. There are still some of our schools that we are working on who would be not at the top of this chart, but at the bottom of that chart that we are in the process of unpacking more to figure out what's the other pieces that are causing them not to row in that same direction. Um, so it's a long-winded answer to it. It's not just a curriculum one, but I think for the purposes of the curriculum, Leslie Ryan Miller and the team will build in so that at some point, you know, over the next two months with what we have for time, we'll make sure that they can just give you some, like a more, a deeper look at the curriculum.
Look, I, I'm delighted we're having this conversation, right? As we try to be, and the chair will say this all the time, a student outcome focused governance board. Right? It's great that we're talking about outcomes. What you do though is say ninety days tweaks, changes and love seeing what's going on at the homes at the Dearborn. But we're, we're not necessarily talking about changes that are being made based upon what you see in the data. You're pushing on three years, you're focused. We agree with that. I think it aligns with the school committee goals and we're in agreement on that. Maybe it's at the end of the day and, and of the year report, it's okay, here's how they have done, which have had lift, which haven't, what changes we're making as a result of it. I do want to talk about um, attendance as well, but Chair, I know I'm over my five minutes, so I'll stop and
Okay.
come back to that if, if we have time at the end.
I have a question and then I'm going to come back to you. Um, looking at this, this is the, um, the graph on page five. Um, that shows Holmes is at sixty and then all the other schools. Um, so I have two questions. Um, I'm going to assume that this is only a small subset of our schools. The question is if we were to line all of the rest of our elementary schools, would they all be going higher than sixty or do we have some of our non-transformational schools down in the lower end?
The red's the city average.
That's a great question. I don't have that graph, but we can see the red line here is the district average.
Right.
So given the number of schools, there would be a distribution, but I actually, maybe I'm a little too focused on the set of schools that I work with.
Right. So yeah, I'm just wondering where the others fit into this piece too. And then, you know, I look down here at the school that's got twenty-three percent. And my question is, and this will go back to your questions often about, I'm a parent with a child and my child is in one of those schools at the, the tail end. How long? How many years does my child stay in a school? That's got, that's only moving this needle only twenty-three percent before either the school says to me that this is not working, we'll help you find another place. Because you know, my, my fear often for parents is that they trust the school they're in. And if my child is sitting in your school and my child is getting A's, I'm going to assume that A actually means something. But then if my child moves to another school and I find that A actually was a C minus in this new school in the same district, then we have not kept our contract. And so the question is, how do we, you know, I mean, you've done a wonderful job of bringing all of your adults together. I don't think we've gotten enough about teachers as being the critical piece. I can give you great materials, but you can't be the, the reader and not the interactor, et cetera. We know sort of what those things are. Where becomes our accountability to all of our kids to say, you know, we've got to find you a space in a place that's really going to give you that grade level piece. And you know, I know we're, we're keeping, you know, we, we're doing all kinds of things to accommodate a lot of different needs. But the bottom line is how are we accommodating the number one reason we're here? To improve student outcomes if we don't take those bold chances to say, we, we're not going to allow a child to be in a program for more than a year. If we're not seeing the growth, then we're going to be looking to move that child to a better place. And how are we making sure we are creating those better places? How are we holding the adults accountable to say, we demand that we do the kind of work that you're doing in all of our schools. You know, that is what we're here for. Where do we get to make that demand? So that we can actually see the change begin to happen and not be looking at this another year.
It, uh, it is a matter of trust and we have to feel that urgency and
It's more than urgent. We've been saying this for fifty years. It is urgent, but
Yes.
But what, what, what's the tipping point change to say, no more?
Well, I think the way in, in the scope of the transformation office, I'm asking ourselves and our school leaders a different question, which is how can we immediately make sure that something changes in the classroom, if it's a classroom where the growth is, is low? Something has to change right away. I'm not, in my mind, not thinking about, does the student go somewhere else? I'm thinking, how can we ensure that every classroom is functioning to match our vision of what BPS classrooms should be? And the way we should be using the information, whether it's attendance data, climate data or literacy data, this isn't more important than the safety survey or the sense of belonging survey. Those are very urgent for students also that they feel safe and they belong. But when we see an indicator that's low, our regional teams and our transformation office, we need to be able to respond quickly to that, to work with the school to figure out what to do. And I, I, I know I'm a school reform minded person, so, but most districts have year-long cycles in their improvement planning. Some have multi-year cycles. It's unusual to have ninety days. We may be the only district in the state that has that. It's a lot of extra work for the schools to do that. But it allows us to respond more quickly. And if we use the systems we have, we should be able to do better than most systems, what you're describing, which is use our information to spot a concern and then work right away with the school to address it. And that's what we have to do.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't, I think Chair, that it's a, I mean, it's a, it's a great point and I think we certainly feel the sense of urgency. I don't think there's been systems like this before in BPS at the classroom level to really look at each classroom and understand and know what's happening. And I think the regional network and the supports it brings and the office that Mike is the head of is, it's a, it is an injection of resource for this very purpose so that we see fewer and fewer schools at the tail and more schools above the red line. Um, and, and we feel that urgency too, right? Until like every one of them is up. But that response team didn't exist before. And I think that's something that has been created and we see it working just in the year to year. And just in the district performance overall, we see that. So we know that it's working. We just need to get it to work as fast as possible.
Yeah, the, the comment that you made that um, closing gaps doesn't happen until we're at a fifty percent. Do, does everybody even understand that? I mean, that was literally the first time I've heard it put in that kind of way. Tonight, that would say to me, okay, if I'm at fifty, I believe I can begin to see myself closing gaps, but if I'm at twenty-three, you know,
Terrifying.
I should be terrified and be urgent. So you know, and if our whole issue here is about closing gaps, you know, how are we helping people to, just even to begin to see that and then think about what does this mean for what we're doing? I'm going to stop and move it back to Steve. Thank you.
Oh, right, okay. Um, so I think another input of this is also looking at for those schools that we're, we are seeing growth, looking also at staff diversity uh, among them. Because it's, I think it's all the inputs that you named and it's also who's in front of the, the students and what type of representation that we see there for, for student success. That's the first thing. Second, I think my questions are more for you as a, as a new school leader. Um, one, what type of support network have you received? Not just from your own school community, but from other school leaders um, in the district. And then my second question to you is, you're now in a position where you've seen growth at your school. And we talk about transformation schools, um, but it's like one of those things not completely out of the water. It's about sustaining that growth, right? So what do you foresee as still, what are still challenges that you see at your, in your school community to sustain that growth?
I think um, being like Boston, born Dorchester Reeves and like a BPS student who's gone through the entire pipeline system, I have benefited from what I would call my own personal executive cabinet of like former principals who used to work in the system that I could call on. I also did like Lynch Leadership Academy, which was super helpful. That kind of gave me the strategy. On like when you walk into a school building, the first thing you actually need to do is like take a step back, assess and build like strong relationships. And then I think what's also helpful, because this is like hard work, is um, the regional support model. I don't think we touched on that much. Like I have an equitable literacy coach. I have an attendance coach. I have a um, he, I mean, the regional support model, I feel like we have a coach for everything, which I think is, is just helpful because really good school leaders know that you can't know everything, right? And so I'm able to like lean on that support and go into classrooms, whether it's a K-two classroom or a sixth grade classroom and say like, am I looking at the right things? Am I making the right pushes? You know, my superintendent, my assistant superintendent, Mary Driscoll, who's here is in my building. We're having those conversations. She's picking up her phone. And I think that is the type of support and like coaching as a new school leader that you need to be able to thrive in any building. Um, and you know, a lot of my friends who have con, gone through, you know, similar systems and you know, they talk about the same thing, this idea of like the regional support model is helpful when folks are effective. You know, our, our hiring liaison that we have, that's helping me push people through, that's answering questions. When it comes to evaluations, calling on, you know, Mark to say like, hey, am I writing these up the right way? Um, am I looking for the right things? For me, that is just, it's an incredible network to have. I'm also a doctoral student at U Penn and I recently defended. And so I get to sit in the classroom with na, school leaders nationally and everyone doesn't have a regional support model. And I'm like, oh, I'm grateful. You know, I'm a grateful school leader and I'm really reflective. And I'm like, oh, I'm great that I have a rolodex of people that I can call anytime and can be super responsive. Um, and so I try to take advantage of that all the time when I need help and you know, just how I was raised is like, oh, if you need help, you better ask. So I try to um, you know, lean on my executive cabinet when crisis happened and I try to lean on the people, you know, at the central office level and the relationships of um, the principals at the district level too. I think as a, you know, as a black woman, I think other black women feel really responsible for my leadership. And I think that's the, that's the, you know, I don't know, the, the thing I get to lean on the most um, as well. So they, they, they check on me, they call on me, they're like, do you want me to pop up on your probable org? And I'm like, I think I got it. Um, so I think that level of support is there for me as a first year school leader. Um, and then I think you asked another question. What was your second question?
It was around being able to sustain the progress and sort of what challenges do you still see for your school community?
Mm-hmm. Um, we talk about that all the time. Folks are like, oh, you did something really incredible in ninety days. Like how do you sustain that? And I think my biggest thing is staying on brand and saying like, we are staying the course, right? I inherited a school where eighty, and I said, we're like a mini HBCU, right? You walk in, there's one white student, two Asian, everybody else is like black and brown. Um, and so my biggest thing is just like, we're staying the course. We are putting high quality instructional materials in front of everyone. We are having, you know, consistent coaching cycles. Um, you know, we are doing things where we're honoring staffs or you know, what I would say like, we're um, making sure like we're taking care of our staff, we're building those relationships, we're building moments within our school culture and climate where we're coming together, we're shouting people out, we're um, you know, celebrating key moments um, as well. So I just think, you know, my biggest thing is just staying the course. Our QSP slightly shifts. Um, because we want to see the consistency and I think that's the hardest part is like, you come into a building and like this and you're like, there's so much that you can change and there's so much you can do. And I'm like, oh no, what I really know is like, if we do three things and we do those three things really, really well, then we'll be able to close the achievement gap for families. We are clear on like when you come near the homes, we're engaging our families, we're engaging our students, we're teaching our kids. Folks are, you know, live and magical in classrooms and we have a top tier, which I invite you all to come see, a PBIS system. Our school store has to be one of the best school stores that I have ever seen. And our kids between our PBIS system and our town halls, I mean, they are jumping for joy. I'm like, oh, we're the school that goes viral. Um, because you can see the excitement in our kids and they believe. Every kid's like, oh yeah, I'm at the greatest elementary school in the city of Boston, right? And because we're trying to create that counter narrative. Um, so for me, it's just about like sustaining and staying the course and not shifting up every single thing that we do because new gimmicks come out or other schools are using new curriculum. We're like, no, we're just gonna do what we do. Um, and we'll see. Oh Lord.
I'm obsessed with you, but that's a whole We will schedule it.
Cause I'm like, I have so much respect for you, Mike. I was like, oh, your job is really hard. I thought my job was hard. As a first year school leader, but you're doing fabulous. If nobody told you.
You are, you are great and your kids are lucky and I want to see it all in action. I do, I have a sort of broader question, not about your school, because I'm going to see it, so then I'll have different questions. I have a broader question for us. Cause I do think we're getting the same question sort of being asked, but there is no answer yet. Like, if I'm leaving tonight, sort of headline for me is, we will support low performing schools in perpetuity with additional resources with a ninety day review cycle. And like, I love the analogy of like, we are all, if we all row the boat together, we finish the race. God bless America. But like, at what point, I think there actually has to be a policy. Like, at what point do we offer someone a different boat? Like at what, because I feel like if you surveyed this building, real talk, and you were like, how many people sent their kid to the school with twenty-three percentile growth? Y'all know that that's not, that's not what's happening here. At, because they're making different choices because they have enough information, because they know the name of that school. Because they have enough information to make the choice. Like, what is the policy that a school has been in turnaround or transformation? How many, and even with all the new system structures routines, like, is it five years? Is it six years? Is it ten years? Is it twenty years? Is it two years? We have to have, we can't set up systems without an endpoint. Then we don't have a system. Like it's a system to what end?
So Mike, it might be good to just talk a little bit about with the state, what happens when a school is underperforming for
many, many, several years.
I think you're asking good questions, then we're asking ourselves the same questions. And just to frame what's happened in Massachusetts, ten years ago, there was a very aggressive intervention attitude of turnaround. Turn over fifty percent of the staff, extend the school day, invest lots and lots of money. And I think they found that sometimes it worked really well and sometimes it actually was counterproductive and produced stigma, negativity and no improvement in performance. So across the state changed their approach and nationally to be more supportive. So right now, schools are in different levels of support from the state. And the schools in the highest comprehensive support do have more intensive oversight and some additional resources. Above all, they receive a lot more visits and focus on the classroom level instruction. And we believe that that is helping us to align rather than to just be fearful of a very dramatic overturning of everything happening in a school, but we need to show results um to, to justify that more supportive approach. If not, the question you're asking is a good one. The interventions used to be much more dramatic. If we can't get results with more supportive interventions, we would have to consider more dramatic interventions. And I think that tension is one that we're thinking, all of us are thinking about all the time, and I think it's important to name it. I don't think the answer to which one is better is completely clear.
No, we're, we're probably completely aligned that the only thing that is better is great outcomes for kids. And giving families high quality options. I, I'm just, I'll keep saying it and I will, I, I, we're clearly not getting to a policy tonight, but like, it does matter for us to say publicly how long we're willing to see us insert number percentage of growth. And how long, and then what we do after that. Like, something can't be on life support forever. And then we will have schools who turn around and are like doing the work with great leadership and high quality instructional materials and all this stuff and things. And like, that is fantastic. And we would be naive to think that that will be true across the board, as we saw with turnaround schools nationally, right? That, you know, Massachusetts wasn't the only place who did have that. Some were really successful, some weren't. Not every intervention works. But at some point, it's about adults. The intervention is about adults and not kids, when you're just letting it go on for decades. And I would like to be a body that gets to a place where we say, this is a process we commit to for X number of years. And after that time, we have to make a very different decision for kids. Like, that's the work. I just, I'm like, I feel like we're missing the mark. And then maybe at the end of the year, that's the conversation we're having, that's more clear, particularly as we're going into more difficult conversations about mergers and consolidations. But like, we need that policy. And then real talk on community engagement, people need to know that policy. Because what's gonna, what's about to happen, if it's like, we'll see, we're gonna like feel it out, we're just gonna be in a situation where people are like, you're closing my school and you didn't, and I don't know why. And it's like, no, if we said publicly, we do this after five years, this is what happens. If you don't move up to a thirty-five percent growth percentile, like, it's no longer a viable option. That's a much clearer thing for people to wrap their heads around. And like, we just don't say anything. We're sort of just like, and like, I'm, I'm down to like celebrate superstars in the work. Like, I see you. And I'm also like, my eyes can't move past twenty-three percentile, because I know what that means. I know what that means for a school to prison pipeline. I know what that means for economic and health opportunities. Like, this isn't just like, let's be cute for ten years and like support as much as we can and throw money at it. Like, those are kids. And like, to not be more aggressive about a policy, for me, feels like it is like, it's, it feels like we are not doing the thing we are supposed to be doing here at nine o'clock at night. So that's just, that's me. I think the last question I have, I know you won't have the data this evening, but I do think it will be important as we talk about enrollment is to also understand the um enrollment around the school. So how many are placed over the counter um or administratively paced? And um the percent of students who are submitting applications outside. And I really do hope by the end of this year, we have a clearer policy around what happens. I am so thankful for your work. Like, everyone in the community is better because of it. And at the same time, it's always student outcomes for me.
Thank you.
So, um, Mr. Cadet Hernandez, I'm just thinking through what you're saying and I hear you. Let me try an analogy and see if it works. Like, we as a board hire the superintendent and we evaluate the superintendent. So we set up goals, right, for the ball, the board. And we set up goals for the superintendent, or we agree on goals with the superintendent, and then we evaluate the superintendent. And if at certain point, year after year after year, the goals aren't being met, we're gonna make a change. And I think if, if I hear you right, to me, it's almost like us saying to the superintendent, what is your evaluation process on these schools? And at what point do you say the goals for these schools aren't going to be met? And so what is your action plan on it? Is it, is that kind of what you, because I, I don't quite see it's us setting a policy at thirty percent whatever, but hearing from the superintendent, like, what's your plan on this?
I think it could be either or. I think it's all connected. There's like the what's your plan? And then there's also, we vote on a budget that supports these schools at a higher level. And that means there is a kid somewhere else who's not getting that, that money. And so when you have a tranche of thirty-nine schools that are acquiring, and deserving, because those kids deserve it, but getting additional resources, and we are not having a conversation of how long that type of resourcing persists as part of a budget, like, it's all connected. And so like, it could be as simple as, this is a, you are in transformation for five years with X percentage of growth. That is a real policy. That's like a real thing that we believe in, or it's tied to the superintendent's evaluation. But like, you and I both know, like, real talk, like, what that, the real, the thing that's gonna actually move the needle is like, we publicly say a school is in transformation for X number of years, and these are the measures that they meet. I don't know what that is. That's for the superintendent to tell us. But like, then we make hard decisions. Because if not, we're just talking about the same schools over and over again and being like, we'll give more money, and that's great. And like, patting ourselves on the back, because there was like a eight percent growth, and that's still thirty-three percent. And like, you know.
It's a little bit of what I was getting at before, like, at what point do you say, okay, the curriculum you chose isn't working? Or the school leadership or the professional development or something, and what are you going to do?
Sexy part of it. And at what point do we close the school? And say like, this is no, no longer working.
Mike, um, can you just uh look at the slide that shows the district median for growth on the map?
For the uh, non-high schools or the high schools?
Uh, for all.
I think it's on two different uh slides. This is the non-high schools.
So what approximately is that?
Forty-one is the district average for non-high schools.
So if the district average is forty-one.
I guess this is the K to twelve average we have itself. Forty-one is the um K to twelve average.
So if the district were forty-one, then that means sixty percent of the schools are actually below where they need to be. So when we look at our hundred and nineteen schools, it would not be feasible. Uh, even if we had X number of schools even in transformation for four years, to have enough seats to transfer the students until we bring the district average up using the systemic strategies that you guys are doing. I mean, that's my read. I think, uh, I think we have to recognize that BPS has been in the lowest performing ten percent. And at times, the lowest performing five percent, well before this committee decades. We couldn't transfer our way out of this. We have to raise the boat of the entire district before we have enough seats that we could actually offer to be able to say, we're moving a student from this school to a higher without having a domino every year. We do need to have, and I, and I don't think it's the way that it's been in the state with kind of the punitive turnaround. Because to Mike's point, that hasn't resulted in anything. And actually, the community comes out and says, don't take my school. I love my school. I know it needs work, but I love my teachers. I love my community. It's safe. It's where I want my kids to be. So any policy we set, or any policy procedures that I set, has to take into consideration that it academics drives, but it isn't the sole factor for what parents look at when they are looking at our schools. But this, you know, we learned this with the high schools a decade ago. If we close schools based on just performance, we close five schools, another five just tip. Because we haven't like dug in to figure out inclusive education. So we have schools that have tons of like substantially separate programs. And it tips the school, and then that school becomes the twenty-three. So then we dismantle it, take all the subseps, move them out to the rest of the schools, and then the next school that we just put two programs in, tips. We have to work deep and broad at the same time, but also to recognize, we got here and it's not gonna get fixed in one year or two years. We can't make a policy that pretends that with one thing, we're gonna all of a sudden give parents a better choice. We have to make sure that in every classroom we go into, in every school, using the regional suit model, that it is a better experience than it was yesterday for our students. And in that way, we have to work to change broadly at the same time we are working deeply with the work that Mike's doing. So I just offer that to think about. Uh, I'm always open for suggestions. If we want to talk more about what could be something about our own classification, when a school has had, you know, more than three years of subpar performance. But these are all things we're already doing. Like, for instance, we don't wait for a school to get to the ten percentile. We now look at the eleventh to the fifteenth, and we say, that's, those schools need intervention. And then we look at the fifteenth, twentieth percentile and say, those schools need intervention, because we don't want any school to start going in the wrong direction. Those are systems that never existed. We are not in the bottom to percentile of the state any longer. And that's because in the past couple of years, the deep work that these teams have been doing and the systems that we've been setting up is raising the boat at the same time that we're going deep in these, that twenty-three or that twenty-seven, you know, or any of them. So I just think we have to be in the context of what has happened here in BPS and the history of it, and recognize this is gonna take some time. But rather than move kids around, let's work in each school, giving it the resources in as deeply as possible to get all schools to come up. So that next time Mike shows that, that red line isn't forty-one. Because that's not all Mike's transformation schools. That's the rest of the district. That line needs to be fifty or above, right? That's what we gotta kind of focus on. And that said, happy to continue to have the conversation. As always, we feel this urgency. I think every member of the team feels it, and I know I did. That's why I came back. But we, we do need to understand where Boston's coming, where BPS is coming from in order to understand where it's gotta go to.
So, so, Madam Jimmy, I continue. Thank you. So, um, very helpful. Thank you. And really appreciate the analogy of the necessity of being broad and deep as well. And I think the point I was trying to make is, um, I think it's helpful for us to understand how you think about making change and when you think about making change. And, you know, it's comforting to us to hear your thought process on that, not, certainly not for me to dictate it, so to speak. I do want to move on to, as I had said, I had a question about chronic absenteeism, the, the other piece that we talked about today. And um, I was reflecting, I've been reflecting on this issue a lot. And it reminded me the analogy of, a number of years ago, the Private Industry Council did a great study with Northeastern University about the cost to students of dropping out, right? And it became quoted endlessly about you live a decade less, which Manny Allen at the Credit Recovery Center will tell me, when you're nineteen years old, you could care less about living a decade less than your seventies, because you don't think you're gonna make it to twenty-one. Manny taught me that lesson. But make a million dollars less, and that caught students' ears, right? And I was thinking about how we transform that to having people understand what it means to you if you're gonna be chronically absent. We all get letters from our energy companies that says, here's your energy consumption. Here's how you compare to your average neighbor. Here's how you compare to your most efficient neighbor. And we also go, oh, I want to get to that level, right? I want to save money. And I was with a couple of school leaders last week, who interestingly, both had gone into lockdowns or safe modes. Um, so they were spending the next day calling every family that hadn't arrived, that hadn't come in. And they were hearing different stories. They were nervous. They hadn't had the right information, that type of thing. And we started talking about the students who are chronically absent and what their academic performance has been over the years versus the students who do attend and what their projected academic performance is, right? We know chronic absenteeism from a Parthenon report a few years ago is one of the early indicators of being a future dropout. And all the other things Mr. Cadet Hernandez just mentioned, right? And so when we dig in on chronic absenteeism, do we have the data that we can share with parents? That says, your student's projected growth is this. If they keep missing class, they're gonna be missing out, and here's their projected academic growth, which is going to be less. Do we have that data? Could we get that data? Do we think that data would be worthwhile?
Yes, I think this is a great point. We, with, with the win the day, the goal is to connect with the parent and the student and educate about where they are and the, the impact that the chronic absenteeism is having on them academically. But it's also to help understand better why they're not coming.
That's.
Right? Like, that, that's kind of the key, because you, what we've learned from visits is you can't, we can't go, which feels like, almost like a blame thing, like, your kid's not in school and so therefore, da-da-da-da-da, immediately shut down. We need to start to say, we need to go, and I'm sure Leanne does this in her conversations, but like, you make the connection with the parent and say, we noticed, right? Like, John's not coming to school. What do we think is hap, you know, what's happening? Like, what can we do? What can we provide for support? Now all of a sudden, you're on the same team. And so, and then, once you make that bridge, then parents are receptive to hearing. What does this mean? Well, I didn't, you know, sometimes we hear parents say, I didn't realize he was out eighteen days. And I'm like, yeah, actually, yeah, it is eighteen days or twenty days. So sometimes the parent's like, oh, I understand, like, yeah, he's not gonna be out anymore, you know? Or sometimes, um, well, well, I know he was a good student. He was, but now that he's become absent, it looks, look at kind of what's happening. Like, he's really smart, but he can't stay like with the curriculum because he's in and out. Now all of a sudden, the parents with you as kind of like a, a way, and this is what our attendance, um, what our attendance folks do. This is uh what our family liaisons do. This is what sometimes uh our social workers do. And there's a power in that conversation. So that's the win the day. It's the idea that we're tapping in, incentivizing with kids, but also making connection with the parents.
And I agree. And the stories are completely different, right? About what the impact is. High school, it's they could be working, they could be caring for siblings. Younger ages, you, you hear particularly in the early learning centers where parents say, oh, well, you know, Friday, the, the little one's tired. And, you know, Friday, they don't need to be there and that type of thing.
I mean, one of the places we see the highest absenteeism at the high school level is the twelfth grade. See, that's the thing, right?
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a number of reasons, but I think it's also, I think, to your point of what you said, it's also to some degree, not calling out, but calling in individuals on it. And, and being very intentional about disarming, because I mean, if, you know, if you're coming to me and say like, my child is out, there's almost immediately a judgment on the parenting.
Yeah, exactly.
Because that's, I, I guess as a parent, that's how you would feel. And so being able to do that in a way that disarms that, to say like, I'm not saying that you're a bad parent. I'm not saying that you're not doing any, I, what I am saying is that your students, your child's presence here is valuable. And we need that, and we need your support in doing. And so, yeah, it's here.
So I'm trying to bring it home to the pick analogy, right? Where it became real for a lot of people when they saw the impact of dropping out. I think it, it would be interesting to see. I think it, it would be interesting to see the academic performance of students with regular attendance versus academic performance of students who are chronically absent and how that gap happens over the years. And that becomes an additional tool to share with parents of, here's the repercussions type thing. So I just throw that out as.
I think that's, I think that's right. And I think, um, I think we can also do, one of the things we did at the beginning, which was led to the chronic absenteeism actually being the indicator, is we overlaid the academic data aggregately with the absenteeism. And that's, it popped, right? It was like, very clear. That's like something we can do and, and give like halfway through the year and then at the end of the year, um, for, for, for sure. I think, you know, this is the, one of the biggest issues nationally, statewide and us, that we just, we have to continue to, to work on.
And, and I love the win the day approach and look forward to the learnings from Region A. And it's just, the more ideas we can come up with, the better. Because this is such a critical issue. Our students can't learn if they're not in the classroom.
The other thing I will say is, we're also seeing kind of like, which I think is extremely positive. Uh, from a dropout rate standpoint, uh, we're seeing a big bump in students that are still engaged in what we call the five-year graduation or the uh, extended engagement. Those are students who would have previously dropped out, but because we're offering so much support and different kind of opportunity, they're staying in the pipeline and they're gonna graduate. So it's, it's not an insignificant factor for us. Uh, because otherwise, our dropout could have just gone through the roof, as it did in a lot of districts because of the pandemic. But I think like in general, like, um, you know, we'll be able to report out on all of that with the actual numbers. But um, trend wise, that's one of the things I see.
Thank you, thank you, Madam.
I just wanted to say, thank you so much for having me. I have to go. Be at school in the morning.
Thank you.
I want to say, thank you so much. We're gonna wrap this conversation up, because I think we could go on all night. Thank you both, um, for all three of you actually, for what you brought tonight and um, the exciting work you're doing. And I feel like as our friend leaves, you know, we say particularly all the time, student outcomes won't change until adult behaviors do. And tonight, we've seen an example, several examples of what it can do, what can happen for our students when actually adult behaviors do. Look forward to your continued work and thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you so much. We're gonna return to public comment, Ms. Povex. No public comment?
Thank you. Um, new business.
Just one thing, um, I, I knew, I know we said we were gonna revisit the idea of uh, working groups at some point. Um, do we have an update on that or just, is that going to be at our next meeting or?
Uh, I think we can bring it up at the next meeting. We'll organize something around it. I think one of the recommendations was financing facility as a area that would be worthy of kind of drilling down to.
I mentioned this to you, Chair, but I want to bring it up as a new business and then figure out how, what we do with it. Um, I want, we are often talking about, like, it's on the calendar or it's coming up at the next meeting. And I want to have a visual of where, what is happening meeting to meeting. And I, it would be helpful if we were able to see, what is like a mandatory um, report or update that we have to get? I'm a guy who likes things color coded, so let's say that's in blue. And then separately, sort of what do we just have on? That's like sort of historical. I think sometimes we're just doing updates, because it's just the way we've done updates. And then I think there is a moment for us to talk about what we want to see more or less of and what's not there. But I think that would be really helpful for us, because even like the meeting started today, right? And it was like, oh, that, we'll talk about that next week. And it's like, help, would be helpful to know. Um, and then I'm just echoing what Dr. Alkin said about the, the subcommittees. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah. And the other thing I just would like to encourage all members to do is to really take advantage of both the weekly meetings with the staff, be it Megan or with the superintendent, and our bi-weekly meetings too, because there is so much that goes on in between meetings to catch up people with, so.
Home visit.
Pardon me?
Home visit is not in the contract.
Gotta, I have to email Patty to do some school visits with you. So I miss another opportunity to, so.
We'll send you an update of responsibilities and what else you can.
Great.
But thank you all. Okay, so that concludes our business for this evening. The next hybrid school committee meeting will take place in person on Wednesday, April 24th at 6:00 PM, right here at the bowling building. Is there a motion to end this meeting?
Some of them.
Thank you. Was there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Was there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the emotion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.